I remember when in the 90s I managed food concessions. And when I got in, we had all this yellow mustard. And I got in a couple cases of Gouldens. Because I thought to myself, it was a desecration to get hot dog to not have, you know, good spicy brown mustard. The number of people who wrote saying that the most important change they'd seen that year was that they had Gouldens, they had a proper mustard to their hot dog, was absolutely astonishing to me.
Yes. I forgot to come.
These little fatoids, yours. Alright, so Steve is not here. We do, on the other hand, actually have quorum.
I'll call Alison and at least get her on.
Well, let me call us to order, then you can, right?
I just want to make sure she, I mean, I'm happy to do, I can just at least call her, so she...
Yeah, you can start calling her.
Yeah.
But she's not part of the quorum.
I was gonna leave this...
Actually, aren't we supposed to always like announce some sort of a remote participation policy?
Yeah, luckily you're regional chair, because it's, you basically have to say that in town of Amherst.
The Amherst is a whole...
Yeah, you're citing references to MGL and stuff, region, it's just, you have to announce it.
Awesome. Well, I used to work for a state agency that also where you had, like, there was some written thing you had to read out. Mr. Manino?
We're one packet short.
Are we really? That's very sad.
Sure, yeah.
I think you can.
I'll get another one, if he can go ahead.
Okay, so your work, she's working with...
They don't sign these during the meetings, or we just have to decide till later?
Uh, I don't know. I always consider it to be rude, because it's almost an indication, either you're not really paying attention to what you're signing, or you're not paying attention to what you're talking.
Hi, I just wanted to...
So I never do.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the connection works.
Alright.
I'm gonna put you on speaker.
I don't think I ever remember sending this to you during...
If you're not hearing something, just type in.
Alright, thanks. Are we good?
We are.
Okay, so, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Amherst County Regional School Committee at 6:31 PM. The meeting is being taped for broadcast by Amherst Media, which we appreciate deeply. And also, we have a member of the committee participating remotely. We do have a quorum present physically. And Alison, are you there?
I am, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Eric.
Well, the microphone is being now oriented more towards me and the rest of us. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Cool, awesome. Since it's not executive session, I don't think we have anything else boilerplate around that, except for to make note of the fact that due to the remote participation, all of our votes will be conducted by roll call vote. I think that's it. So, someone say something? So the first order of business will be approval of the minutes of October 16th, 2018. I don't know if people had a chance to look at the minutes, or not? And entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Dillon?
I move to approve the minutes of October 16th, 2018.
Is there a second?
A second?
Moved by Demling, seconded by Castenson. Are there any edits? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes of October 16th, 2018 signify by raising your hand. There are four ayes, any nays, any abstentions? If Donas abstains, the motion carries. Oh, sorry. Oh my god.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm screwing up my own rules. Mr. Manino? Manino, aye.
Demling, aye.
Or Donas abstain.
Nakajima, aye.
Castenson, aye.
Donald?
Mr. Donald, aye.
Thank you. Which means it carries five to nothing to one. Thank you. Next order of business is announcements and public comments. So any announcements from the committee? Alison?
Nope.
Okay, so we are open for public comments. If you have a public comment, please come forward and address the microphone, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. And I will even get my, all everyone's thinking about coming up. Seeing no one coming up, I'm going to close public comment period. Subcommittee updates. LPAC representative, I assume that means we need to find one?
Yes.
Would you like me to...
Want to remind people, remind people at LPAC?
Yeah, and I think, I think in the packet Debbie shared some information about the Look Act, which we, yep, it's, there it is. Right after the notes, I apologize, Debbie had it right in order, of course, I'm looking the wrong way. So, last year in November, the Look Act was passed. We've talked about it more at the elementary, Amherst Elementary Committee, in relation to English language learners. But one of the, another of the positive attributes of the Look Act was that it creates, it requires districts who are a certain size. And between our districts, we fit that size, and we're going to do it, because it's the right thing to do, even if we didn't, sort of technically, we could get around it. Which is to create an LPAC, which is an English learners' parent advisory council, and is modeled after CPAC, which people are more familiar with here. We had our first meetings last Thursday. There was one in the morning, one in the afternoon, with pretty good attendance, particularly in the afternoon. And the idea is to get, increase our participation and input from parents' guardians about the English language learner program. So Ms. Richardson, who many of you have met, who's our English language learner coordinator, facilitated that. There were many English ELL teachers and staff present as well. So it's just getting started, but it would be great if there was a committee member who was willing to step forward to be representative. I think much like CPAC, the plan is to have meetings roughly every month. And again, the goal is to increase participation and input and feedback that we receive from the parents of English language learners in our districts.
Wonderful. Any other further questions about that?
Is this similar to CPAC in that there's one for both districts? It's like shared?
For all three districts, yeah, absolutely. And I think similar to CPAC too. I know Ms. Richardson met with the CPAC president about just the structures that have been successful in CPAC, and trying to emulate them.
Any further questions, or? Would take a volunteer now, or we'll take a volunteer later? Ms. McDonald, do you have any questions?
Um, no, if we don't, if nobody else is stepping up, I'd volunteer.
Then we welcome it. Thank you very much.
And I'll make sure that you're connected with Ms. Richardson about future meetings and the agenda from the first one.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So do we have any other subcommittee reports, like from budget and finance, for example?
Just a quick announcement for the committee that the flowered folders that are in front of you have actually been prepared by one of our school equity task force members, a couple actually of school equity task force members. You'll recognize some, a couple of the materials that are in here. One is a, the second page here, which is stapled together, is actually the newsletter that Dr. Morris had shared with all of us, I believe, last week, or maybe the week prior. And it came from the students at the, here at the high school that have been working on the Restore Justice Program. These are, these are the, you know, sort of student leaders. So if you haven't had a chance to read the email, it's been printed out for you, and just, I highly recommend it, because it shows some of the enthusiasm and excitement from the students. The other thing you'll see here is a letter from former principal Mark Jackson regarding his experience with the Restore Justice Program. As you know, he was presiding over the initial meetings that took place when the program was started. He has worked with the SETF for over a year, you know, has had a couple of meetings with the SETF, and has reported back to the SETF on the progress of the program. And so he includes some of his thoughts in here, that we thought you might wanna, you might wanna see. And then finally is the, one of the pages of a report that was shared with the committee also a couple of weeks ago, regarding just some of the disparity in discipline and in education, particularly among Black and Latino students. And so, wanted to highlight this, because there's a lot of really important information that came through in this report. And of course, it's work that we have been talking about and thinking about, and the SETF in particular has been very concerned with. And so we thought it was, you know, a good idea to highlight this as well. So I just want to thank two of our members of the SETF that are here with us tonight, Alisa Malnick and Mary Lou Faro, who's also been working with this group for quite some time. But in any case, just wanted to highlight this, and make sure people get a chance to read it.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Page?
Well, we held a meeting at five o'clock, we reviewed three documents. A draft of the trust agreement for OPEB benefits, a draft of the designer selection procedures. And we talked a lot about these. And we took no votes.
Okay?
It's out there.
Okay. Great. Let's see, where are we now? Any other subcommittees that want to report? Or have any updates on their meetings?
Just one question, I, I'm also sitting on the board currently for the Collaborative for Educational Services, and I think it's more of a process question, so they will routinely share the director's report and some of the other materials. I don't know if the committee would like me to go ahead and forward that directly to the committee, or if I should go to the chair and say to him first. What's your preferred method for sharing things like that?
I guess what we typically do, it seems like a lot of things run through Deb.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was typing. Yes, the, it can come through me. And I'm happy to get it out.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, no other subcommittee updates, seeing none, we'll move on. Superintendent's update. Do we have a separate piece of paper for this?
This is actually in the packet.
Okay.
So the upside of getting in the packet is it previewed it. The downside is, of course, there's things that aren't in the packet that I then realized, so I'm gonna orally share them. But it's on the page right after the Look Act page, I believe, yeah.
You mean it's in order again?
It is, thanks to Ms. Rich Morland. And so, this month, earlier this month, we partnered with, a group we partnered with before, PAIR, which is Political Asylum Immigration Representation. They're based out of Boston, but there are some folks who are parents' guardians in district, and other interested people who are connected to Western Massachusetts. And in this space, we offered a Know Your Rights workshop for our high school students. We did that a couple of years ago, you may remember, but, you know, thing with high schools is the kids change, right? So, we didn't necessarily take the students who saw it two years ago, but also some of the content had changed. In fact, I think it changed three times in the month. They sent us the content of the slide deck a month before, and I think there were three iterations based on changes that were going on, particularly in the federal government. So I want to thank, you know, Dr. Givara, who is a primary contact, Dr. Gramacki, who's here tonight, interim principal Gramacki, and I was able to attend part of it as well. And I was really impressed with the engagement of students. Their questions ranged from technical to political, to what's the future of our country going to be, to, yeah, I think I'll leave it there, because of confidentiality of their comments. But what was new this time, in addition to a slightly different set of information, was that the week after, students were able to, and their families, if they wanted, to come in and meet individually, because this is a group setting. The first one, there was probably, I think, 20, 30 students present, so they were able to meet individually with representatives from PAIR, to talk about their individual situation and context, and get individual feedback and advice. So it was a nice thing that we were able to offer our students, and, you know, I think, without getting into exactly the content of the dialogue, it was one of the more poignant things to see. So someone like me, I was born in this country, I have a lot of privilege that comes along with that, and getting to witness students who don't have that privilege be able to interact with the larger context, which I read about, care deeply about, but don't personally experience in that way. One of the, both poignant, scary, and, I don't know, it was an experience that sticks with me, certainly. So I'm glad we were able to offer that for our students and their families. The LPAC event I just mentioned a bit of, so last week, we had the first meetings. We did one in the morning and one in the evening, or late afternoon, based on feedbacks, that we could try to access families where they, when they were available. Ms. Richardson facilitated the meetings. Again, the afternoon one happened to be a lot better attended than the morning, but there was a lot of interest in being more involved in school. We had translators present and staff present, because there's a range of languages that families speak, but highly successful start to a new venture for us. Cross-country update, so just the girls and boys teams won the Western Mass Championships. And individually, we had two students win the individual titles. And for those who don't know, cross-country, that's like the same event. So the team runs, and then the individuals are running as well. So the teams won, and the first finisher for both the boys and the girls for Western Mass was from our school, also at the middle school level. The boys and girls won team trophies at the Western Mass cross-country meet. And also, we had the boys and girls champions at the middle school level as well, which is neat. Strategic planning, so on October 31st, which is Halloween, we had over 35 stakeholders, which included middle school, high school students, faculty, community members, and parents' guardians, engaged in the first meeting of strategic planning team. We set a context, we set goals for the work, we created norms, and we participated in envisioning what we'd want our school to look like in three to five years. And those 38 people, I think it was, are now crowdsourcing, getting more feedback from their communities. So when the group comes back together on January 9th, lots of work that has happened about not just relying on 38 people, but actually getting their constituent groups to come and participate in getting that feedback as well. We had a college access retreat, this is all the way back on Indigenous Peoples' Day. So we had students, staff from the family center, work with UMass students from a certain sorority. Particularly for students who is their, their, their hope is to be the first in their family to go and attend and graduate from college. So they don't necessarily always have the family background support for that process, because they're the first to go through it. So we provided some additional support on that day, and the feedback we got from students was highly successful, and supported them into thinking that this, this whole thing called college applications was more doable and readily available to them. We'll hear more about this in December with a more detailed update, but we've had the math consultant from Looney Math Consulting view our sixth to 12 math program. They've been in classrooms, they've talked to staff, they've been here twice. They also had two parent guardian opportunities for feedback, as well as surveys that went to staff, students, and all parenting guardians at those grade levels. Mr. Sheen will be at the next meeting, and he'll give a much more thorough, detailed review of that, but just wanted to keep folks up, because there were public events, want to make sure you're in the loop. Last month, we had the opening of Mountaintop Pistro at Summit Academy, which was a really nice event. And as you know, Summit Academy moved, and they now have a commercial-grade kitchen setup. And they always had a kitchen program, but now they have commercial-grade equipment. So it was a really nice event, a number of us, actually frankly, who were in the room, including Dr. Gramacki and some others here, were present for it. I also want to say today was Summit Academy's, they have an annual tradition of a community Thanksgiving. So that was, I think actually, lots of people, you'll hear from it a little bit. All were there, as well as I was, and it was just wonderful, tremendous amount of food. But the, you know, the big thing is how many families came in, and just the community atmosphere it builds. And the band played, which was great as well. Our students last month attended the MCAN conference in Boston, which was really nice for not to have to, the travel was much easier for our students, this was a treat, to drive an hour and a half. And we're hoping that they can come, it can get on the agenda for December. This was a tough night originally, they were gonna come, but families, you know, heading out of town for the holiday. And I just shared some links about, you know, the pre-readings, you get a sense of what they did before they, they were there, as well as a video that they shared with us from the conference. As we'll talk about later, the Department of Education, the Massachusetts Department of Education is seeking public input in the expansion of Pioneer Valley Chinese Emergent Charter School in Hadley. It would increase their maximum enrollment to 952 students. Anyone can offer input on whatever, however they feel about this, to the commissioner of the Board of Education at either charter schools, one word, at TOE.Mass.edu, on or before Monday, December 3rd, which is coming up soon. And just two more quick ones. One, you'll hear about this a little bit, but November 6th was Election Day, which for us was a professional development day. We're able to offer high-quality professional development to all of our staff on the topics of equity and social justice. Think all, I think it was shared with all of you, the different workshops that were offered, and you'll hear a little bit more in a bit. And lastly, thanks, shout out to Jody, wherever he is, and Amherst Media. So we've doing, we've increased our window into ARPS episode load, and they've worked with us swimmingly on that. And so the recent one, which just came out yesterday, was by parent request, which was great. That's the first one, we've had a parent email and say, "I really want to hear about this." And it was about our English language learner program. So we had Sue Abdo, who's an ELL teacher, department head of the high school, and Terry Geffert, who is an ELL teacher at Crocker Farm. So we had sort of the K-12 continuum of ELL services. And our next episode will be on the high school, and getting an update on the high school. So Dr. Gramacki and Mr. Siddique, so the interim principal, and the assistant principal will be joining me to update the community on all things high school-related. Sorry, that was a mouthful, but it's been a while since we met, so.
It is. It's been actually since October 16th, hasn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes?
So just a question for the superintendent, I'm wondering if there are any plans for the committee to hear more about the math program at the high school, the math curriculum? I mean, I understand there's been a couple of questions raised about that recently, and so just wondering if, you know, there might be some room, upcoming agenda to hear more.
Yeah, we were planning to have Mr. Sheen talk about that, you know, in the broader context of their math review as well. So I think we can do both.
Wonderful, thank you.
Met at the next meeting.
At the, I'm sorry, at the December meeting.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes, I have a similar question, so hopefully the scope of that is both the future planning, and also what mitigations, if any, would be done this year, based on whatever feedback you're getting and observations you're having. Thank you for pointing out the email and the deadline for the charter school expansion proposal. Just, if you happen not to be here in two or three hours from now, and you're in the audience for another item, school committee could definitely use the help in spreading the word about the importance of this. This is over half million dollars a year at the regional level, 2.5 million at the Amherst level, and the school is essentially doubling, proposing to essentially double in size. So, spreading the word about that, however you feel about it, is appreciated. And just a quick question I had about the strategic planning. It seems like kind of a long period between the very first meeting and the next one, it's like over two months? Like, what's, is there thoughts about what happens in the interim in order to keep progress going on that very large, important project?
Sure, some of this was by design, that you want to give people time to gather feedback from their constituent groups. So if we offered people three weeks, then we know that not everyone would get as much feedback as they're, we're hoping that they get. And the other is just that, the, try to schedule that many people in the month of December, when there's multiple holidays going on, created a logjam, so we made the decision to have a longer period, and also extend the amount of time that people have to get feedback from their neighbors, friends, and the larger group. But you're right, it, but it was intentional that way. You're right to say there was a long period of that, rather.
So we haven't, we haven't met since middle of October. And toward the end of October, there were some extraordinarily challenging incidents nationally, particularly in Pittsburgh. And I didn't know if you had anything to offer the regional committee, because I think you talked about this, the Amherst committee, but you didn't at the regional, we haven't met. And I don't know if you want anything you might want to share with people.
Sure, thank you for reminding me of that. So, so after the tragedy in Pittsburgh, a group of high school students engaged their administration, and then eventually me, and wanted to get together to have a meeting to talk about how they were experiencing the tragedy, and how it was influencing their time, both at school and beyond. And so the students reached out to Dr. Gramacki, and then she reached out to me. I was in touch with the students, and we asked the students if they wanted anyone else to be present. And so, given my background and faith, they encouraged me that I'd be welcome to be there. As well as, I reached out to the local rabbi from the Jewish community of Amherst. And so he was able to attend, I want to thank him again. It was an incredibly stressful time for everyone, and particularly for someone who's called on for many, many things, especially in the time of tragedy. And so he made time to come over for an hour and a half on a Friday afternoon, as he was getting ready for Shabbat, and spend time. And so there was, you know, students during high school, they, some people could stay for a long time, some people came in late, but I would say all told, over 30 students came, not all of them Jewish, some were allies, to talk about their experiences. And again, and Spall's been, had a lot of them, but it was incredibly moving to hear the students talk about, not just their experiences with Pittsburgh, but their experience being Jewish, living in Western Massachusetts. And I think the other thing that was so compelling was, so many students who were not Jewish came in and either made connections to what the Jewish community was feeling, and how they felt, in whatever they, way they want to share, or just one, they thought it was important just to be a listener, and just to be a supportive listener. So it's an incredibly supportive meeting, it was hard, people, emotions were quite raw, but I think very productive in giving students a space. It was completely student organized, so the rabbi, myself, some staff were there. We were there as participants, but two students who were organizers facilitated the entire meeting themselves, and I think that was also telling. So, it was something that I think students needed, they voiced that. I checked in well after the meeting, there were many of them still there, and checked in on how they were feeling. And there was a sense that, without an opportunity, a safe space to talk about how they were feeling, how they were experiencing, Amherst, Pittsburgh, living in this country, they really didn't have, not all of them had a mechanism to do that necessarily, in a healthier way with their peers. So I want to thank Dr. Gramacki for creating the space and providing support for those students. And thank the students for taking on such leadership in the meeting.
There are too many examples of this, obviously, these days in our society, and they're disparate in terms of who the targets are. Obviously, in this case, it's a grotesque act of antisemitism. But one of the things that struck me is, at the time being, when you were talking to me about it, and we were talking to the committee, was that there was, kind of similar to some of the mass school shootings last spring. Remember, if you listened to some of the high school students, it felt very immediate. That was similar in this case, that it was, felt very, very immediate, very personal, in the sense of insecurity. Felt very real and very personal. It's, I don't know if there's any, is there any, anything that would be followed up on after that? Or is foreseen, followed up on over there? I mean, just about that particular incident, but in general?
Yeah, I think, so, you know, we offered the student, you know, at the end, one thing, so, you know, so in the meeting had to be me and not me, right? So I wanted to be a full participant, and so that meant putting my superintendent hat somewhere else. And then I also had to put it back on at the end, to make sure that our students got what they needed, whatever that was. And so, when I came back and looped back around, there was about five or six students, and I said, you know, "What is it that you need?" And there is a student support group, or student affinity group around, you know, Judaism, and there's kind of this structure that they had. And, you know, they said, you know, "We feel like we're gonna have to see how this plays out, and what supports we need." But I think the big thing that they got was that there was a supportive administration, a supportive staff. There were six or seven faculty members who were there, just to make sure students felt like, you know, they needed. It was a Friday afternoon, at the end of a hard week. So I think that, at the time being, they expressed they got what they needed, and that their, their, not professional, their organization, their affinity group, would be, you know, going to Dr. Gramacki or others, if there was continued sort of ongoing support. At a larger level, I think it does point to our need to be continually focused on issues of difference, and how everyone feels included or not feels included, in all sorts of scenarios, both, you know, locally. But I will say that a lot of the conversation didn't revolve around high school. It revolved around what it meant living in Amherst, Leverett, Schutzbury, or Pelham, living in Western Massachusetts. And I think that's true, not just for this Jewish student group, but it's true for lots of groups in our schools, that we focus, as we should, so much on the school day, but when you let students speak, they talk a lot about the experience that aren't Monday through Friday, 7:45 to 2:15. So that was the other takeaway for me, was just, how does this weave into larger community dialogues around what does it mean to be a multicultural community? Sorry, I could go on for...
Well, we didn't have a chance to talk about it. It was really valuable to, particularly at the regional level.
Yeah.
Ms. McDonald, do you have anything, I mean, anything at all, you want to ask or say, to the report?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay. Anything else in the committee? Okay, seeing none, chairs report. So, one of the things that, coming out of one of our last meetings, where we did have a discussion, actually literally the last meeting, kind of, it's weird. Like, we're, I'm on this cycle where our regional committee meets like every other week, you know? And so it's like, we've had a really big gap between meetings. So, we had that great discussion with the School Equity Task Force about not just the goal, the top-line goals that the school committee adopted last year, but underneath it, a series of more concrete recommendations. I think when you look at the superintendent goals for the year, some of them are actually reflected in there now. But one of the questions I have, and I'm throwing this out sort of as a planning practical question going forward, is there are, and we had those presentations last year, we had, we know that there's work that's ongoing, and has been ongoing, that reflect a lot of these same goals. But it just, it just strikes me that as we're looking toward the budget season, and as we're looking toward refining the strategic planning process, that the question of how do we optimally include, engage, align, and operationalize, that, what was presented, that becomes a really critical question. And so... And so what I'm, I'm throwing this out now, because what I would like to do is maybe at the December meeting, have some kind of more in-depth conversation, and I'm obviously looking at the superintendent, because, and actually, Ms. Cunningham too, because if it doesn't come from you, then it's not going to be worthwhile, right? As of, what are we looking at here in terms of the next year and the deliverables? I mean, if you look in your draft goals, for example, the strategic planning process, and sort of delivering upon that process is one of the goals. Speaking kind of just for myself, but not really, because we did adopt as a committee the five goals as a top line thing. It's hard for me to imagine getting to May or June and not having those goals in some ways reflected and operationalized within the strategic planning process. But sort of getting more granular of an understanding of how that happens and where it goes is, I think, really important. And so I don't, I don't want to have a perfunctory conversation, or one that feels like a sort of fly-by-night one. I'd rather it to be actually more organized and more thoughtful. And particularly, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, particularly when you're looking at the next six months, and you're thinking at time points where the S E T F, either through its engagement with the strategic planning process, or in some other venue, or where the art committee or whatever, or when we're looking at the budget, there are going to be different time points in which we could clearly engage in a, in a way that's both useful developmentally in terms of our overall process, but also very practically, right? Like, what are we doing this, what are we, how, does it affect the budget? And if it does, how? You know, where we can then have a really sort of more granular conversation, but that's also feels productive, and it feels like it's leading to something. Does that make any sense?
It does.
Okay. Is there anything else?
If I can just add to that, I think, you know, we've, I've spoken with the Chair before and with the superintendent about the importance of continuity of our goals, right? And finding a way for us to track our progress and make sure that we are continuing to move forward. And so that, you know, once we adopt a set of goals, that we understand, you know, this is something that we've, we've adopted, we've all agreed on, is important. And so how do we then ensure for ourselves that we're actually making progress on this? You know, and some of the ways that we've talked about, you know, data collection and things like that, require, I think, our committee focus, right? Because in order to make sure that it's actually going forward, and that we're funding it appropriately, and that we're finding the resources and all that, I'm interested in thinking through what that means as we start these conversations around budget and everything, you know? So if we can have that kind of a conversation, you know, just to build off of the Chair's report, you know, for the next couple of meetings, it would be really, really helpful.
That's a good one.
Yeah, I think, just one thing, and I don't want to skip ahead on the agenda, so I'm going to be cautious about that. But since some of the goals that S E T F proposed do have budgetary implications, and one of the things we're doing tonight is offering feedback for the administration on what to come back with, a more detailed budget information about. It seems like there might be a happy marriage, especially thinking about the December meeting, of linking budget guidance that you offer us to come back with, and there's some information in there. And some information that wasn't in the S E T F goals that, going in, that Ms. Cunningham and I spoke about, well, you know, some of these things will have budget implications. So we can get to that when we get to it, but I just think there might be just a really natural way to start that conversation in December.
I think, I think there, I think there is, but I mean, I'm just, not to put a fine point on it. To me, I, I want to look at the next six or seven months, or whatever it is. Because I think if we don't look at it in that frame, then it feels, it can feel episodic, right? Like, there's a certain, and also, I'd rather, we're never going to have enough money. And so I also would rather have a conversation, and in fact, who knows, maybe we'll, I hate to say this on microphone or the camera, who knows, maybe we'll end up in a world in which we're doing cuts again. I hope not, but we just don't know that right now. And so I also don't want to have a conversation about budget priorities and ads, or whatever you want to do, where we talk about it, where it seems sort of like too rifle shot, it seems too narrow and focused, without looking at the big picture. Because one of the things I've said before, I know, so this last year, is that one of the challenges of this conversation is if one thinks narrowly about budget in the given fiscal year, then the obvious answer is there's never enough money, right? And so then you say to yourself, well, we can't make progress on this goal because we don't have the money. So do we, do we commit ourselves to the goal because we don't have the money, right? And that sort of circular thing is endless, right? And the reality is, it's not just endless, endless, it's like totally endless, right? We go, we know that 10 years from now, whatever committee is sitting here, they will also not have enough money. Which means we have to then, and this is sort of, this has got to be true with the strategic planning process, right? Is it can't be a world in which we're thinking without resource constraint, what do we want to do in the next 30 to 5 years? It's a reality-based exercise, right? It's got to be taken into account, our constraints. And, you know, maybe we're never going to have enough people in IT and data to do the kind of analysis we want. I don't know. If we're not, then we got to figure out, how do we satisfy us getting where we need to go, in a reality-based exercise? And so anyways, my point is, so that look ahead for the next seven months, and where are we going with all this? And how does this fit into the conversation, how does it fit into budgeting and other decisions? Seems to me to be part of the right way to do it, because then we can more fully integrate. Part of what I'm trying to do, and I sort of, I think we're all trying to do this, but I'm, this is something I really care about doing, something to use the first person singular. Part of what I'm trying to do is stop having conversations that feel like they're Balkanized, or in some ways, you know, it's this thing over here, right? I mean, we're doing, planning for the whole district for a three to five-year period. Like whatever we want to do with math, this has got to be integral to it, right? And I mean that literally, like, if we need to make changes with math, that's literally going to be integral to whatever the planning is we do for the regional district. Well, so is this. So let's figure out how we do that. How we get that stuff organized in a way that, that feels seamless, and feels, you know, and is measurable, and also is reality-based, meaning we don't have enough money? We, we never have enough money, so how do we make progress? Anyway. Ms. McDonald, do you have anything? I'm going to keep doing that every once in a while, by the way, just because otherwise you'll have to yell, presumably.
Thank you, I appreciate that. No, I, I agree with and support what you were just describing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on. The first item of business, new continuing business is restorative practices. Do you want to introduce?
Sure. So unfortunately, though, our restorative practices facilitator for the district is not able to be here this evening. But I really appreciate Dwayne Chamble, who is our out-of-school time coordinator and works through the family center, who is an enthusiastic supporter of restorative practices, is willing to comment share his, his experiences being in circles, and the implications for him. So a fair, fair statement, Dwayne? Okay, so I think you want to come up to the microphone?
Very quickly, you can come on up, I just wanted to make a note for the committee, if I can.
Yeah.
So we had talked about having the head of the restorative practices program here, but she is away for a medical leave, I believe. So the idea is that she and a group of students will actually be coming in January. Hopefully, we can get her on the agenda, and make a presentation to the committee. You know, the students who actually were in charge of writing that newsletter,
Yeah.
to help share their experiences and their stories around, you know, having this incredibly important program in their, from their perspective, you know, just having, describe that through the agenda, you know, and having us learn more about it, so.
That's awesome.
Thank you. So I just have some prepared remarks that I'm going to read, and just to keep all of my thoughts in line. But hello to everybody that knows me, and to everybody that don't. My name is Dwayne Chamble, and I am the out-of-school time coordinator for the Amherst Pelham Regional School District, and I thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm here today to talk about my personal experiences with the healing circles conducted by D W McRaven here in the Amherst Regional High School. If you want to know, I'm sorry, I want you to know that what I'm about to share are my personal thoughts and feelings, and do not reflect any influence from any outside source. I was invited to speak before you by D W and the S E T F, and I feel honored to have been asked to share my perspective. The three main points that I want to touch upon while sharing my experience with you today are: feelings, connections, and the idea that that kid, those students, they are all our children. See, these points are the foundation on which I believe we are building a new structure of love based on common bonds and mutual respect. When I, when I first arrived in this district three years ago, I was admonished by my mentor to treat all incidents with students and their families like they were my child and my family. This wisdom has been at the core of every interaction I've had, ranging from a happy good morning greeting before, at the before-school care program, down to having a difficult conversation with a parent about an incident on the after-school care bus with their child. In each and every case, knowing that I care for this child like they are my own, connecting with their parents to ensure that they know they are not alone, and feeling love, compassion, empathy, and care, have shown me that the power of love and our mutual human bond, for one thing, the very best for our children, is at the core of who we all are. These values, I feel, are essential to a healthy and happy community. And these values I have seen, felt, and experienced participating in the two healing circles conducted by D W McRaven. Now, there are a few core feelings that I want to, that I experienced while in the healing circles that I want to share with you all today. Those feelings are anticipation, there was sadness, it was isolation, it was fear, it was depression, it was loneliness, it was empathy, it was love, it was hope, it was a lot of smiling, and then a lot of laughter. You see, these and many other feelings that are, that are not listed are alive in the hearts and minds and bodies of our children each and every day. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but we can prepare today's field by nurturing tomorrow's soil to safeguard a fertile terrain for the seeds of destiny to be sown. Now, I know that was just a mouthful, but I want to explain, you know, what these seeds of destiny that I speak about are. You know, these are seeds of love, these are seeds of belonging, these are seeds of caring, these are seeds of, you are enough just the way you are. These are seeds of, this too shall pass. They're seeds of, I'm going to love you and support you no matter what. These seeds will surely, with the right cultivation, produce a beautiful harvest of loving, empathetic, and socially responsible young adults. So at this point, I wanted to just speak about my experience with D W, and who she is, and how she conducts herself. So I feel like I could list many type, many points to add to her credentials, but what I really feel that, especially in this profession, that more than credentials, that a person's character is the core of what we should be looking for. So I just thought about her, and I said, you know, these are the things that came to my mind about who D W is. And when you meet her, you know, you'll feel this as well, I feel you'll feel this as well. The thoughts were commitment, a commitment, undying commitment to the students. It was compassion, it was expertise, it was purpose-driven, it was unflinching, it was dedication, it's passionate, passion, generational healing, and a visionary, a visionary pioneer. And to close, I just feel when I think about restorative justice and what that means to me, that means a proper alignment, a realignment to something that's natural, something that flows. And I feel that the restorative justice and what we're doing here is a, is our part and our piece of realigning our community, because I feel that we as humanity, we as people, we've lost the connections, and we've lost the genuine feelings that we have for each other. And the thing that I feel that will bring us all together is that we all want a better future for our children. So if we come together on that point with this restorative justice, and seeing all of the kids that are in these circles as our kids, because, you know, our kids have to deal with it, they come home with the stories, and, you know, we're all in this together. So I just feel that continuing to do this practice is going to be our part to make this world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in that context, I'm glad you, you also said that this is almost like a preview of coming attractions. When did we have that meeting with D W? Was it last summer or spring? The S E T F, I mean.
I think it was, it was at the end of the spring, or maybe, maybe even like early spring. I think Ms. Cunningham, you might have been there, maybe at some point in the beginning, it was in the spring.
It was the spring.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been a while. And I think, you know, just to kind of wrap that up, and I want to say thank you, Mr. Chamble, so much for saying what you've just said. I think we've talked a lot here on the committee about the value of this program, and why we wanted to bring it to the district. And to hear somebody articulate that in that way is incredibly powerful and moving. But I do think, you know, having sat with Ms. McRaven, and having sat with even Principal Jackson, but hearing the, almost a transformative experience that, you know, folks who have been working in this, this program for a long time describe, is an incredible asset to our district, right? And it's something that you see the value in, and especially when we, you know, we talk about Pittsburgh, and we talk about so many of these other, you know, terribly, terrible impactful events that have taken place. Understanding that there is a program like this that can actually help shore students up, and also educators and staff simultaneously, right? Because it's not just about the students, it's also about the other people that are experiencing it with them. And, you know, again, you'll see the letter from, from Principal Jackson, hearing him talk about it, from somebody who had, you know, never experienced that before, to someone who had gone through, you know, sat through a circle and talked with Ms. McRaven, and talked with some of the students, and going through that learning process was so incredibly important and transformative. And you understand, this is why we're doing what we're doing, right? This is why we're investing the resources and the time and the money into a program like this, because it actually pays dividends in so many different ways that we don't necessarily understand even now, right? But I think that, you know, having an opportunity to hear directly from the people who have both led that program and participated in the way that they have, and hear from the students, is just going to be incredibly powerful for the committee.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, my, my recollection of the meeting we had last spring, I guess it was, was how incredibly powerful the work is, and also how hard it was to get your head around what it actually was, without having a, sort of a deeper dive. And I remember at the time being thinking I wanted the school committee to go through a circle. But if we, if we don't, which I still think would be a good idea, if we don't, we'll make that decision after January, right? Because it has to be a group decision that we would do that.
Yeah, we might do it after the budget process, right?
I think it's always a good, I mean, based on what I was hearing, I think it's always a good idea. But my, my point is, though, is that you need to hear about the actual work to sort of get it. Otherwise, it sounds, it sounds very impassioned and transformational, but also it's, it sounds slightly abstract until you really get into understanding what, what the work really is. So I'm looking forward to that. Cool. Anything else for the committee? Seeing none, thank you again. HR, this is a, this is a really well-described item. HR department update. I don't know, I'm not even going to throw this to you, Superintendent. Like, I'm not even going to do that unless you demand a step in.
I don't. Oh, never mind. Sorry, I'm getting different feedback from different sides of the table, so. No, actually, I would like to do a brief introduction.
I'm just, I was just teasing you.
That's okay. No, I really do think, kind of a couple of things I want to say as an introduction. One is I really want to thank the department for being here, not just Ms. Cunningham, but the full department. And I think that shows the teamwork that this, this group has. I also think, and related to the prior conversation on S E T F goals, oop, that's not a good screen on that one.
No, that one's fine.
I don't know how to solve that one. So I'm not going to. I think, I think tonight, and there's been updates since what's in your packet, just with a little more refined data. So what you'll see on this screen will have some of that. So I do think it's also responsive to some topics of conversation as it relates to staffing and percentages that the community's been asking for. And, you know, I'm pleased that we're not there, but we're showing a lot of significant progress. And, and I think finally, it shows the range of topics and areas, critical work of the district, that one department is able to, to work on. It's not just one aspect, and even from the kind of slide deck that's in the packet, I think you get a sense of the wide range of tasks and responsibilities, and critical responsibilities a department takes on. So with that, I'll pass it over to Ms. Cunningham and her team.
Well, good evening, everyone. Last year, we started off a new HR department, and our department consists of Damani Gordon, our diversity equity special... our diversity equity specialist, we have Sasha Figueroa, who's my assistant, and we have Jennifer Ortiz, who is our HR administrator. So, when we started, we, we created five goals that we wanted our department to fulfill for last year, and this update will just let you know how we did with those goals.
Does that go through?
So, our HR department is really three people and my assistant, so all the things that you're going to see was done by this miraculous team. So, in this brief overview, we're going to talk about the great things, uh, we have a slide that congratulates our district and gives you more information as to the great things that we're, we've been doing. We'll also look at the goals that we had, and then answer some of the S C T F questions as to staffing and how we've progressed towards our diversity equity goal. We'll talk about the waivers and trainings, and we'll touch a little bit on the futures program, because Demani is integral with that program. Then we'll leave it open for questions.
So, first, we wanted to congratulate everyone on the hard work that they've been doing. We've ranked, um, the best place to teach in Massachusetts on niche.com. We're also number nine in the best of the best school districts in Massachusetts, number twenty-four with the districts with the best teachers in Massachusetts, so I think that's just, it showcases the hard work that everyone does, from the administrators down to everyone, to all of our staff and our faculty, and making this one of the top twenty-five places in Massachusetts to work in and to do business in.
So, our goals, when we started last year, we planned to hire and retain quality diverse staff, we planned to assist our administrators with the license, and our educators with the licensing and waiver process, and with anything that they needed, such as, um, help with grievances or complaints or concerns amongst the staff. We looked towards, uh, training, we helped to advance, our hope was to advance many of our staff members within our district to a higher level, and to, um, continue to build relationships and partnerships with our community. So, as far as retaining and hiring a diverse staff, here are the statistics. This chart just talks about, gives each department and how we've done. So, in 2017-18, in each of these departments, these were the total number, including the hires, that, of people of color that each department had. So, if you look at the business office, for example, um, in 2017-18, there was one person, and now we have two. So, going all the way across, we see that there's been an increase in most departments. Right now, the two departments where there was a decrease, we're still in the process of hiring additional staff for those two departments.
So, those numbers are the staff of color?
Yes.
Compared to the total?
Mm-hmm. So, here is, you can find this information on the DESI website. So, if you look at the top boxes, that's at the regional level, and then the bottom boxes are at the amerest level, and the, um, the numbers in the parentheses tell you what percentage of our staff, total staff, are in the, um, have chosen that demographic to, um, to call themselves. So, if you look African-American, in 2016-17, we had seventeen. Now, in 2018-19, at the regional level, we have thirty-five, which is twelve percent, twelve point five percent of our staff. Same thing for amerest. In 2016-17, we had sixteen, which was five percent, and now in 2018-19, we're almost at seven percent. Now, this one was interesting, because here, what we did was we took the student demographic, because I know S C T F has asked, how do we compare to our students, and they wanted to, one of the goals they had for the superintendent was to have our, um, staffing increase to reflect the number of students. So, if you look in 2016-17, African-American at the regional level, we had, um, six point seven percent, now in 2018-19, teachers are at, the teachers are the numbers in the parentheses, so teachers are twelve point five, and our students are at seven point eleven. Don't, don't change it yet. If you continue to look, there's been an increase, there's two categories where we really need to work to improve, but we are working on it. So, when you look at the, um, Asian and the multi-race, non-Hispanic categories, those two are still very low, but we are working to increase the number. And our retention rates, this is also on the DESI website, so in 2016, we retained, our retention rates were seventy-three percent, and in 2018, we're at ninety point eight percent.
But is that the retention rate of staff of color, or the total?
The total retention rate.
That would be interesting for the staff of color, retention rate.
So, next, we'll be talking a little bit of how we were assisting our administrators with, um, the whole licensure process, so our administrators and our educators. Um, and if we go to the next slide, um, something that we incorporated that's different from years past is the evaluative tool that we use, which is My Learning Plan, we inserted new fields where teachers can keep track of the licenses that they hold and the dates that they expire. Um, so whether it's initial professional license, and each of those category, categories, excuse me, have their own, they have different parameters around their expiration date, but it also gives administrators an opportunity to go in and see which of their teachers hold what licensure and when those licenses will be expiring, so that everyone can keep track of where they are in their licensure process and where they need to be or be moving towards. Um, so, this is just a quick overview, we've also included the public lookup, so that you can just, you know, administrators, teachers themselves, they can look themselves up, but administrators can look up their teachers, or if they're looking to hire someone, um, and they want to see what licenses that person has to fulfill whatever needs they have in their buildings, they can quickly go in and see if they're licensed in that area or not.
Right. So, one of the, um, this change came as a result of the spring conversations that we had, where, uh, there was a question as to what do we do for teachers to make sure that they know where they're at, and for administrators, how do we help them? So, this is permanently on My Learning Plan, every administrator that goes into My Learning Plan to do the evaluation of the teacher, this is the first screen they see. Every teacher who's going in to input their goals, this is the first screen that they see, and they cannot go past this screen without responding to it.
That's right.
What percentage of teachers and administrators do not hold licenses?
We're going to get to that.
So, uh, this is a comparison of last year to this school year, and the amount of waivers that we've had to request, as you see, we've had to request less than half of the amount of waivers that we had to request the year before, and, um, one hundred percent of our administrators are all licensed. Um, and some of the reasons are outlined here of why we even have to go out and request a waiver to begin with. Uh, what we found this year were outstanding MTL requirements, so one of the hardest, or one of the biggest barriers for people to be licensed is the MTL, is passing the MTL, and we've included here, um, an example of one of our educators who's had, who's tried four times to pass the MTL, and they finally passed it, but it takes that amount of time and effort in order to be licensed, so we've had to also, um, wait for endorsement letters for other dis, from other districts, we can't provide them ourselves for incoming teachers, so we have to wait for other districts to provide these endorsement letters to prove that they've passed certain requirements, so that they can achieve licensure. Um, and we also have very unique slots and, and opportunities in our district where you have to have dual licensure, so for instance, you may already hold, um, a core, a license in a core subject area for ma, in math, for instance, but if you're working, um, with a group of special education students, you also have to be licensed in special education, moderate disability. So, um, you may be licensed in one area, but we need to help you get licensure in the other area, so while you're achieving those goals and while you're, you're checking off those requirements, you need a year of, to be on a waiver in order to advance into your license. So, those were the reasons that we found this year that we needed to request the waivers that we did.
And so, one of the questions that may be going through your head is, what are we doing in HR to help with this situation? So, with the MTLs, we are offering MTL prep courses, uh, for some of our teachers, and, you know, uh, through the futures program, we are able to have our courses offered for free. Many of our teachers are taking advantage of that, so that they, um, the person here who we talked about, who took the MTL four times, that individual actually went through the prep course and was able to pass the MTL after.
All right, next, um, I want to talk about, uh, the trainings that we have had this year, uh, based on diversity, inclusion sensitivity, and other practices. These are the trainings that we've had, um, hiring process, um, and that's based on, you know, getting together a pool, a diverse pool of folks, um, in order to strategize and, um, get the right person and the right, um, fit for our schools and our district. Implicit bias, implicit slash affinity, affinity bias in hiring, uh, those three, um, trainings were done during admin week, uh, right before we start school, when all the administrators are there. Uh, we also have, uh, licensure, as we just talked about, types of, uh, renew and processes, and we also had, um, as Superintendent talked about before, the November sixth P D day recently, um, we offered twenty-two, uh, different workshops, there were options, uh, for our teachers and parents that wanted to be involved. Um, some of the trainings that we had, just to give you an idea, was, um, getting to know restorative justice at A R H S, um, and that was youth-led by some of our students. Um, the N-word in the classroom, teaching racist language without harm, creating gender-inclusive classrooms, and laying the groundwork for having difficult conversations about race. So, just a few of the, uh, trainings during the P D day that we had, and there's also the U Rock, the Undoing Racism Organizing Collective, um, all, except four of our administrators attended that, um, and the four that weren't there will be, uh, participating in one coming up very soon in Hartford, Connecticut.
So, the first three trainings that are on there, those did take place earlier in the year, but we're also cycling back in January to continue with these conversations and these trainings, because we're coming again to another hiring season, and we want to make sure that the administrators understand their own implicit bias in hiring and help to increase the likelihood of having a diverse staff.
Also, part of the, um, the licensure and wanting to make sure that our administrators understand licensure, our teachers understand licensure and their requirements, we've, um, started to hold licensure training during staff meetings, some of our principals have asked us, actually at the request of their own staff, of their own faculty, they've asked us to come in during staff meetings and give a quick overview of what they need to do, the different types of licensure, when they expire, what P D Ps are, how many they need, so, um, so that people are better prepared and well-versed in, in what they're, they're, they need to do in order to remain qualified.
Without telling any tales out of school, um, as we're in school, um, how did that go? I mean, were there, were there, was there a lot of active learning on the part of folks who were trying to understand implicit or affinity bias in hiring? I mean, was that, you know what I mean, you know what I mean, like without, I'm not looking for any scuttlebutt, but I just mean, I'm just curious how that went.
I believe it was very eye-opening for a lot of our administrators to see, um, just certain things such as jargon, being something that they hold fast to when they're hiring, and how a lot of, um, our individuals of color may not use jargon, but may say the same thing. So, it was very important for them to see their own bias in making sure that a candidate uses jargon before they hire them. You want to ask?
Yeah, if you don't mind, so, um, one thing that I do is, just any of our sessions during administrative week, we get active feedback on, and the, and it's anonymous, um, and the anonymous feedback we received from our team was that it, it, it supported everything Ms. Cunningham just said in terms of thinking differently about that process and, and what biases we all bring to, um, that, and, you know, I think, coming back to it, as Ms. Cunningham said, as we enter this season, makes sense, but I do think it, it opened a lot of eyes, um, because it was a simulation exercise, it wasn't like a academic exercise that the team put on.
Here's some images of our P D day that our communication specialist, Sasha, provided, um, of, of the different sessions that we had, some were held in the auditorium, they were held in individual classes, but, um, we actually sat through one of the sessions, um, and it was very eye-opening, how, actually, I, what struck me most was how receptive the teachers were, it was a difficult topic, it was how to use the N-word, um, in the classroom, um, without creating harm, and they were just so receptive and open to learning and creating a safe space for their kids when they're teaching literature that can be very difficult for, for students of color to hear.
Here it is.
Can I just ask a quick question? Who was actually teaching these classes, these courses?
We had some, uh, so.
No, just the microphone.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mike, sorry.
No, no, no.
Superintendent, Mike?
So, some of the, we actually had some of our own staff members teaching a few of the courses, we had, um, professors from Smith College, we had another professor from, I think the two professors were actually from Smith, correct?
Springfield College.
Springfield, one other one from Springfield College, um, and then, like I said, our own staff members, uh, teaching the courses, which I thought was really nice to have our staff learn from their own, from their colleagues.
And there were some that were student-led?
Yes, that's right.
And just, if I can ask just a follow-up question, uh, were these, you know, the folks from Smith and, and others, um, here in the staff, were they people who've, you know, gotten degrees, or like, had, what's their level of expertise, I guess, on, on these issues?
So, they, they teach these same, uh, subjects in their own, in their own classrooms in school, in the universities in which they teach, and they've also worked with some of our own staff members, so I believe the professor from Smith had come before and worked with one of our English teachers here at the high school, so there was a relationship there.
And the staff that were here that were teaching it, are they also, what's, how, how do they come up to their expertise?
Um, I think they were vetted by our assistant superintendent and also by our curriculum direct, uh, coordinator, Tim Sheehan, about the subjects that they would be leading, the sessions that they would be leading, and what the material would be that they'd be providing their staff members.
Right. And some of them are professors at local colleges and universities, some of them are just experts in their field, and their, their colleagues have recommended them to, um, be the person to lead that discussion, because they've been in their classrooms and have noted some of the things that they've done. Um, all of them have received at least an exemplary on their ratings and, and, um, for their evaluations and such, but like I said, most of them are well-known, and they do a lot of presenting in, uh, other conferences, so they've been recommended by their colleagues or their professors elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and these are, um, after our P D day, we had, we took a survey, um, from everybody that was involved and attended, and these are responses that we had, one hundred fifty-eight responses, um, and how satisfied you are, uh, with the P D day and what you learned that day. Um, you know, one's the lower end, as in not as satisfied, and five's the top, you know, extremely satisfied, and as you can see, um, you know, there's, a lot of people were satisfied and definitely engaged and empowered, um, by these trainings that we had.
So, out of the hundred and fifty-eight, there were only about three that were not very satisfied, and the reasons were that we were ten minutes later than we had anticipated, um, so those were the, that was the, the big reason, was we started a little late, so we ended a little bit later.
Can I just ask you? So, out of all, how many staff were involved in total?
All of the staff.
Which is how many?
So, we have over, what?
Over sixty, sixty-seven.
Right, but not all attended, so about five hundred, maybe? Yeah.
One of the comments after the P D session was, although I tend to dread the idea of P D for the entire district, since our needs are so diverse, I really enjoyed the day, and I think it was well-run, and I learned something in each of the sessions I attended.
Another comment said having students present was the best keynote possible, so our, our keynote speech was done by about five or six students, and here's the feedback.
And these are the next steps, this is a question posed to staff, um, what other resources do you need to implement what you've learned today? And, um, the responses, uh, were about time, you know, time to implement, to work more with colleagues, um, to gather in professional development communities and walkthroughs. As we know, um, you know, the schedules are so, always so tight for the teachers, and, um, just more time to get those things together, so we can implement those. Um, and the other, um, what we. And the other, what we learned about this was training, workshops at the next level and support staff for implementation, so more of that.
So as a department, we always talk about not having the one-and-done training, and so we are looking to continue with the training, but we're also looking to help the staff to use the information that they've learned, because there would be no point in continuing the training if they're not using it and it's not trickling down to our students. So we're working on trying to find ways to make sure that what they've learned is being used into the class, in the classroom.
One of the things that we really focused on and one of our main goals is to advance our own staff, so with the next slide, we'll be able to go a little further into it. We, we're looking to advance staff on every level, so not just from peer educators to educators, to teachers, but we're also looking to advance our custodial staff, and we've been able to advance two members of our custodial staff in two positions and roles of leadership where they're overseeing larger amounts of people, they're overseeing larger square footage. With our Futures Program, which Demonton's been an integral part of, we have three peer educators who are going through the program to then become teachers. We have five teachers who are, have stepped into administrator roles, and even on our food service level, we're also looking to advance our own staff, so we've had two general food service workers who've come up into positions of cooks. So this is something that we're looking at across as a district-wide goal of ours, to advance our own staff, so not always look outside, but also look inward and see where are, that we have talent within our, within our own staff and move them forward. Another thing that we were really, that we've been working towards is building our own relationships and partnerships in the community, and the, these are the following collaborative endeavors that we've had, so we have our AMR's Futures Program through Mount Holyoke where if peer educators hold at least a bachelor's, we can move them forward into the Mount Holyoke program, to the program, the Futures Program, where they can earn a master's through Mount Holyoke and also become licensed educators. We have our five colleges diverse teacher workforce, where we're looking for a diverse teacher staff that represent our students. We have been working with UMass, we've been hand-in-hand with them with their teacher prep programs, so accepting their students into our district so that they can do their prep programs and their internships. We've been working with Smith College for professional development, as we mentioned earlier, which was during our PD Day, and the Mass Hire Franklin-Hampton Career Center, we've been doing with them, our work with them has been centered around our custodial staff, so moving them forward into journeyman positions where they can then enter into the maintenance field, which offers, it opens up more opportunities for them in the district as well, and even outside of the district.
Right, and another thing that Jen has been working with UMass with is helping our teachers who would like to become administrators to move into a program like that, and UMass is looking and hoping that we will partner with them and have some of our administrators teach those courses. Also, as was mentioned, the Futures Program are for individuals who currently hold a bachelor's, whereas we're working with UMass to work with those who do not currently have a bachelor's, so that they go through possibly university without walls to get the bachelor's and then move into the programs where they can become teachers.
Here's our extensive list of our other HR tasks, just to highlight the work that continues in our department. One of the greater pieces of work that we have is trying to resolve staff complaints. Last year alone, we had 43 investigations, not including grievances and complaints that just come through, and assisting investigations that come through our office. We, a lot of our time is dealt with trying to, trying to resolve concerns that our staff members have so that we can have a happy group of teachers and staff members in front of our, teaching our students, right, and helping our students. Assistant Superintendent Cunningham leads second-year teachers' meetings, and they've been focusing on social justice. We've negotiated four contracts with our administrators, our teachers, our peer educators, clerical staff, maintenance, custodial, and food services. We transitioned over 660 staff members to our new health insurance plan over the last spring and summer, not including our retirees, and as always, our ongoing work with recruiting diverse staff in a variety of roles, whether it's teaching, peer educators, food service, custodial, employment verifications, brickman's comp, we facilitate and participate in conferences, we're called upon for those, for those as well, furthering our partnerships and our program development so that we can help our staff grow, licensure support for educators, the hiring and onboarding of staff, collecting and disaggregating various data, so a lot of times we're called upon to provide information for our administrators on what's going on in their schools, how, you know, how many teachers do I have licensed in this area versus that one. Leadership work and membership, support groups, the enrollment working groups, standardization of CORY, which we've been able to do district-wide also for our student interns, so before that was, it was pretty much segregated per school, they were doing their own collection of CORY information, and we've, it's become a centralized system now where all student interns come through, volunteers, interns, observations, they all come in through a central office, and then we help, along with the universities, we help position them in the different schools, right, Sasha?
Yep.
Thank you, Sasha oversees all of that. Our hiring process, our communications, social media, and the other list of things that we do daily in our office.
So our goals for next year, the goals that you saw, we just reported on for last year, and now we've decided, okay, we're doing okay with that, but what we need to continue to do is to continue to hire and retain a qualified diverse staff. We saw the two areas where we were way behind, that we know that we will like to go out and network and increase participation rates and hiring rates for those two groups. We're working with the Alana Cabinet to review data and create action plans for different things, so they've asked for some information on our special ed groups and also on our teacher retention rates. We're looking to create some programs, so we find that in HR, we're doing so much with the adults in hiring that we don't often get a chance to see the effects, right, of our hires, so we'd like to start going into the classrooms more. I know there's only four of us, but we'd like to get into the classrooms and see how great a hire we have done, right, and then create some of the programs that are needed for our students for social justice. We're also looking to increase the use of restorative justice and restorative practices in the district, so I know that we've mentioned previously how DW is working with the students, but we'd like to start using restorative practices with the adults in our district. And we're going to continue with our trainings. Any questions?
Ms. Cunningham?
So, thank you for this very comprehensive presentation. I would just reflect a little bit of the congratulations that you gave at the beginning, back to the HR department, this small agile effective team, and I don't think you get to be the number-one place to teach, right, without doing something right when it comes to HR, so, like, it's, given the size and complexity of our organization, the fact you have three to four people doing all that is pretty amazing, so I think you should feel pretty good about that. So, a couple of short questions, mostly on the diverse staff and demographic charts. If we could get the updated version of that electronically, that would be?
It's in your box.
Okay, oh, it's in, okay, great. And actually, if you could send, I don't know if you have like the PowerPoint version as opposed to just the PDF version, so that we could like, you know, copy and paste the data and move around, because one thing, opportunity I was thinking of, and I don't know how far back this data goes, like, you know, it starts at 2016, 2017, but I think without too much of an effort, we should be able to, you know, craft some sort of simple, just standard chart of trend, like a line chart that shows the percentages for staff and compared to students, and then every year when this question comes up, it could just be a matter of updating the source data, and then we're always looking at the same format, right? We might have to tweak it depending on what we're looking at, but, you know, I see the seeds of what could be a standard version of that. I'm sort of harkening back to the, I don't know if it's now defunct Dave Trends Subcommittee, whether we folded that in, but this is the kind of thing I was thinking of for that, that kind of effort, so, yeah, so thank you for that.
Well, congratulations, Paige. Do we advertise this? Do we tell people about this? Do we put it on our website? Are we the only group who sees this?
I know teachers and administrators were told, and they were excited about it.
The general community needs to know this, too.
Did we tell them?
Yeah, so we have put it on our social media networks and other things like that as well, and I think it, I do think we get strong candidates for positions because it is, we are seen as a good place to work and teach, so if you look at, you know, for many years, I, for five years, six years, I worked with the first-year teachers, and our first-year teachers are generally first-year teachers to AMR's, a very small minority are truly first-year teachers, and when we ask people why they left whatever the district is, is because we do have a reputation of being an excellent place, a good employer, and I think this is the data to back up what we've done and what we've seen over the last couple of years.
It's just that a number of times we've had these presentations which contain good news, and we hear about it, but I'm just wondering what mechanisms are used to let the general public know about it?
Yeah, and perhaps we can do some reflection about, you know, weekly newsletters and things like that that might be able to highlight those things, it's a really good piece of feedback.
Ms. McDonald, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I don't.
Okay. Ms. Doranis?
So, I also just want to thank you, I mean, I've worked, I think, with most of you intimately, and I know for a fact how hardworking you are, so thank you for that. That actually brings me, though, to a question because it strikes me, you know, I think it's incredibly important to see, I think, I forget how you phrased it, Ms. Cunningham, but the connection point between the hires and what's actually happening in the classroom. And so I'm wondering if, instead of having the HR staff be the ones to actually go into the classrooms, if maybe we might think about the ways that the district can incorporate or fold in this work into other departments, right? So, just thinking about, for example, you know, the curriculum director, you know, thinking about those AP classes, is this something that, you know, maybe is shared with, you know, the curriculum department per se, which I think is like two people also or something? But just ways of incorporating a little bit more of other elements or departments or staff, you know, in central office that can shoulder some of this burden and help disseminate it a little bit more, and I think that actually ends up serving a couple of different purposes. One is, it helps to carry out the work that you're doing a little, even more broadly and, you know, and help, you know, involve more people that could probably bring different perspectives but could also maybe benefit from seeing those connection points. And I know you work, you all work very closely anyway in central office, but, you know, just thinking about formalizing that, like, how does that work? But then also, I think practically speaking, you know, I worry a lot about burnout and worry about, you know, a small, already overtaxed staff to be carrying on even more things, as important as they are, it feels like for sustainability, you know, it's even more important perhaps to think about, you know, how you bring in more people into that kind of work so that it's a little more spread out. Take that for what you will, I think it's just, it strikes me when you're talking about that, you know, how we can, we can help shore the burden, but I have just one more question, and this was, sorry, going back through my notes. So, this is the form around licensure, and I think I had raised this at an earlier time when we were talking about licensure in the spring very intensely, and, you know, I was wondering at that time, and I'm still wondering, if there is a concurrent process that exists so that, you know, it's almost passive when you have information on a website that people have to go to that says, you know, a public lookup of your current valid license can be found here. I think that that's valuable because it's information, but the person actually has to know enough to go to that form initially, right, to look that up. So I guess I'm wondering if any thought has been put in or any protocols have been put in place to proactively inform staff, or at least to just say, hey, reminder, you know, we've got your license on file for this amount of time, you know, our records are indicating that you're going to be, you know, due for a license renewal or whatever, just so that we are ahead of that ball, right, on a regular basis.
So there are two things that occurs. One, Desi sends them an email to let them know, and two, we also, in addition to all the things that we say we do, we audit all staff's license, and we send out a reminder to them and the union and their principals to let them know that they're either coming close to being due or are overdue, and like I said, with this, they are going on proactively every year, and when the principal is alerted that, you know, there may be something that is coming due soon, the principal also reaches out to the staff. One thing I wanted to touch on, too, was when I talked about us going into the classroom, it's just to see the fruits of the work that we've done, so we're here and we're hiring, but we never get a chance to really go into the classrooms, and I'd like us to be able to go into the classrooms and just enjoy it, you know, and see what's, what the results are for our new hires.
I hear that, thank you.
I think that's actually a good, a good practice, in the same way that also some of the ways you're thinking about taking feedback from professional development, I mean, staff, colleagues, the point is getting that feedback and then thinking about, what is this, how do you build next? I mean, one of the things you were talking about before was thinking about how essentially the programming you're doing now is going to be either reinforced like a mid-year hiring affinity and bias and sort of look back, and then looking at this year's programming and saying, well, what do we do next year and how do we build on it? But feedback, yeah, I think all those things that kind of break down silos and move it away from being, I hate to put it this way, because I know you're not doing this, but like, rather than a pro forma exercise where you're sort of saying, we've done this work, isn't that great? But, I mean, as much as you're going to celebrate going to the classroom, you're also going to get really sort of enriched feedback from that and experience that's going to inform and improve the work you do next, I think is great. Ms. Dumbly?
Yeah, so kind of building on Ms. Manino's point, I'm looking at our next item, which is budget guidance, and I think I know the answer to this question, but I'd love to hear from you directly, is, we're talking about marketing, communications, and social media, and all this good news that's happening, and wanting to express that to the community and our potential students down the line, do you feel like your staff has enough time yet? Do you feel like you have enough resources to do all that you want to be doing?
So if I say no, will we a lot more fun?
I just want you to be honest.
Do you mind? If that's okay. So, so I'm connecting this question back to actually something Ms. Doranis said, if that's okay, which was about just the number of people we have doing and the number of tasks there are to do. So if that's okay, Ms. Dumbly, I want to attack it from that point of view. So, I do think, and it's not just an exercise, I mean, we do talk a lot about work-life balance, and that's true for this department, it's true for other departments at central office, and I think it gets challenging when the number of tasks are increasing and the number of folks we have working at central office have significantly decreased in the last five years, and so I think there is a challenge in that, and, you know, unfortunately, we've had, to Mr. Nakajima's point earlier, when we're making budget decisions, and we've tried our best to keep it as far away from students as possible, I think the challenge is that what these folks do is they're the critical support for the people working directly with students, and that balance is sometimes a challenge when we're faced with $1.2 million budget cuts, is what's the right balance on that, and the year before we cut some other significant number, and I think sometimes that gets lost in the budget discussions, by myself included, right, that we try to think about, you know, what's the number of students in that class, and that's critically important, but what these folks do, it's not just a list of things or a bullet list, it's that they're actively supporting the work of the educators and staff that we have in the district, and if, you know, Mr. Sheehan's here next month and he's talking about curriculum, you'll see that that work is critically, and I'm not taking, taking attention off this department, but that work is critically important for supporting teachers and make next steps in how we're relating and supporting students in the acquisition of content. And so, to directly answer your question, the answer's no. So if you remember one of the earlier budget documents from last year, we created, we, through some reorganization at central office, we had a communication position that ended up not making it through when we got to the end of the budget, and the idea, many districts have this in Massachusetts, and one of the challenges is, it, when it's an add-on to someone's job, the job gets done, and I think Ms. Figaro does an excellent job with that, and the challenge is, there's many, many other tasks that also have to get done that often are more time-sensitive than communication, right? It's not that I'm looking at Ms. Doranis, who does this for a living, I want to be sensitive, that I think communication's critical, but it's also, sometimes when there's a CORY check that comes in and someone needs to be in the next day, and we want to make sure they're safe to be with kids, right, that's a, that's a hard calculus to manage. So, I don't believe we're funding communication at the way in which, in a perfect, not even a perfect world, the way we'd want to do it, and I appreciate Ms. Figaro's work on top of the other things she's doing, and Ms. Westmoreland as well, who does a tremendous amount and clean the Friday Update, which is, in my opinion, an aspect of communication, but when I But when I talked to other districts and Ms. Figaro and I, a couple of years ago, were able to talk to another district somewhere in the eastern part of the state, I think, who had someone whose role was to do this, right? The responsiveness, the ability to think more proactively instead of like get really good stuff up quickly and make it look really nice, but not have like, you know, kind of defined longer-term strategy. There is a difference there. So I want to be honest in answering your question that, you know, for me, the answer's no.
So what I want to do is I want to make sure that if Ms. McDonald, Ms. Castenson or Ms. Sullivan have anything they want to add, that they have an opportunity to do so. Otherwise, we're going to move on, obviously.
I, my, oh, man. Every time licensure comes up, I just start sitting here and I start to fidget, you know, bounce onto my chair and my face turns red and my stomach just churns and I get butterflies. And I just, at a district level, I don't understand how you, we were able to hire teachers that aren't licensed. Because having gone through the licensure program and I have an ELR account and know it's pounding into your head that your initial license is good for five years, then you have to get your master's or if you don't already have it, and then you work, then you're the professional license. And I just, at the principal level and up, I just don't understand how we haven't been on top of that before.
I can start if you like.
You can start.
Yeah, sure. So I think a couple of things. One is that some of these were inherited issues.
Right.
But not all of them were, so I want to talk about some particular scenarios and I don't want it to be so identifiable to a particular staff member.
Right, that's why I didn't want to.
Right, and Ms. Ortiz referred to it earlier. So sometimes there are situations where we have roles where we literally do not get one applicant who has all the licenses necessary for them. Oftentimes, that's related to special education where that, so what we do is we hire who we think's the best person to have a license, they may not have the multiple licenses they need for that role. And this team supports them to receive that, the licenses, all the licenses they need so that at the end of this year, they'll be fully licensed. We also have situations where different MTLS come up. So depending if you're grandfathered in or not, there's, you know, the scenarios that were raised earlier around MTLS become a larger aspect or a larger part of the work. We have, I don't want to, I'm just trying to think about confidentiality. So we also have new licenses the state comes out with. So we have had teachers who are fully licensed and the state has now decided, well, there's a, I think there's fine to say, there's a computer science license. And now, someone who's been teaching under their current license without any issues, now is required to get a new license. And by the way, the regs come out just as, just before someone's supposed to actually get them. And how does actually one actually go through that process to get it? So when we talk about the reduction in numbers of waivers, some of that's because either people got their licenses or they're not, they're no longer employed with us and we have examples of that as well. And I want to be sensitive to that factor. But some of it's the structure that when we apply for waivers, it's because we don't have a licensed candidate for that role. They're few and far between. You know, we think about the number of staff members, the number of waivers that was applied for, six. And some of those are actually resolved or we won't, they won't need to be on waivers because they've been able, been successful getting a license. But that is more typically our situation. They're more typically involved in special education or related fields and they need multiple licenses where we get lots of licensed candidates, but they don't have all the licenses they need for that particular role. So that'd be my, in a nutshell.
The nice thing about this bed though is there's no MTL, it's just the classwork.
No, there are MTLS that they would have to take.
There's an MTL for the, oh, okay.
Ms. Castenson or Ms. McDonald? You don't have to, I'm just going to give you, make sure you had a chance.
Thank you very much for this and, yeah, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Ms. Figaro?
Likewise, thank you. It's a comprehensive and very helpful presentation. Thank you.
Right, and yeah, thank you. I add my appreciation to it a lot and it's great. The, I think one of the things that, I think, building off of Mr. Sullivan's question is that what I was, what I was hearing you describe, I thought and I think, was both what your approach is around licensure or ensuring that all the hiring entities are in the, understands what their obligations are and what their responses are, but also vice, my assumption had been that because you were focusing on circumstances under which you either had a deficiency in licenses held for people you're able to hire and get in, or also, I assumed in some cases, and I could be wrong about this, that you were, that this was in some way also connected to the developmental process of trying to improve hiring ladders within, or is that not the case? In this case, it may not be for this year.
So, most of it is what you initially said. We look at people who are the best candidate and if they have the one license, then we work with them to get the second. Some of it was that we were still working with a couple of the candidates that we inherited and are still just working through that.
So the one thing I meant to mention, it's slightly non sequitur but not totally to Mr. Sullivan's comment, is the other thing that gets us into waiver world is we have high-quality candidates who apply from out of state. So we are one of the unique states that is not part of, and this isn't a political statement, it's just the truth. We're not part of what's called the praxis, so most states in the United States take the same licensure exam and states can set their own passing mark. We have decided, and I've, and this is something in my work on RIAC, the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee, we've advocated with the commissioner, the new commissioner seems more amenable to having this conversation, we advocated with the old former commissioner around it, that it's a huge disadvantage for us when we get out-of-state candidates applying for Massachusetts because there's almost no way for them to get licensed until they get here because we're not part of this national. So if we were in Connecticut, and Ms. Cunningham could tell you more details about Connecticut, but, you know, you have a praxis score from North Carolina, well, does the score meet the cutoff for Connecticut? Great, then the licensure process is much smoother. And so for us, we do get a significant number of diverse candidates from out of state and they are licensed teachers, they have work to do to become licensed in Massachusetts because we are unique in our licensing examination scheme. It sometimes takes time and we do need to apply for waivers and our commitment has been, while we can't offer reciprocity with other states, we're not also going to eliminate our way, one of the critical ways that we do diversify our staff, as long as someone has a license from another state, we'll work with them to pass the MTL. But most candidates don't have the license they need from Massachusetts at the time of hire because of our unique status. I'm sorry, I missed one.
I just want to add to what Dr. Morris said and say that sometimes our candidates have a license at maybe the elementary level and they are hired at the secondary level or they have a license at the middle school level and they're moving up to the high school level and just need a moment to apply for the license at the next level. And so we would request a waiver to make sure that we're all licensed.
Ms. Medina? How does a licensed out-of-state teacher get a license? Do they have to take a test?
Yes.
Right, so in most states, they already have taken the test they would need. In Massachusetts, we have our own unique teacher licensure test that no matter if they're licensed, have taught somewhere for 25 years, got a perfect score on the praxis, they have to take the MTL because they're moving to Massachusetts.
That could be a barrier.
So, I mean, at state level, it is a barrier and a local level, but, I mean, that's why RIAC, sorry to jump in, but that's why RIAC feels so strongly about this. They feel like it's a critical barrier to diversifying the teacher force in Massachusetts.
Right.
Right, well.
I was only going to add that even I, when I came here from Connecticut, I had to take the tests here in Connecticut, even though I was teaching for almost 20 years in Connecticut.
Right, thank you so much, Bill. And also, I think the extended discussion at the end is helpful, just given all the conversation we had last year. But I mean, I think one of the things I appreciate about it is just that through your answers, I think both what you and your team as well as superintendent are evidencing is that you're, that, no, I'm not saying you weren't paying close attention to it, but I'm saying you're showing great evidence of being on top of this subject now, which is obviously something I think people should take great comfort in and pride in the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And be safe, by the way. Do we have any black ice out there or anything?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, be careful when you're driving home. It's been really wet out and I understand it's colder, so. Actually, when you, I was at one point wondering whether you were going to be there or whether there was. Okay, dude. Budget guidance. Can we take a five-minute recess? I'm going to, actually, Ms. McDonald, is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
Ms. Castenson, is that okay with you?
Yes, fine.
Okay with me? Is it okay with you?
It's okay with me.
With you? Is it okay with you? Say it out loud, Peter.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good, then we're going to do that. So I'll introduce this slowly. So, budget guidance.
Sure, so I can do a quick, and I think I shared this electronically with the committee, that our process around budget guidance is typically that at the November meeting, the school committee talks about and hopefully votes a few discrete items for us to come back with at December meeting to provide more context and more information about in the budget process. I want to thank Mr. Mangano who shared electronically, it's in the packet, just some key indicative reports. It really captures, uses the same format that the town of Amherst does in their financial presentations and makes it more specific to the schools with, you know, trends and some details and some financials at the bottom of the 12 slides that he shared. So, we're really open to feedback from the committee. Generally, we like to say two to four areas because if we go much above that, those of you who remember the lengthy meeting last December, some of the feedback at the end was that was great and we want to not do probably as many areas because everything was great, but it went very late and some of the feedback I ever recall was, it just got a little overwhelming, the content, the amount of information, so.
It was like a forced slog. Each individual item was fascinating, but the cumulative impact was like being bludgeoned with a hammer, if I recall. My polite way of putting it.
It was a tough year. And just to recap or refresh people who weren't part of the committee last year, so this process, that presentation and then calling out some of these programs for sort of a deeper dive was the product of like a subgroup that sort of looked into the budget guidance process. I think Ms. Ordonez and Mr. Menino and somebody else, Mr. Nakajima, looked at this process and developed sort of this approach to try to make it more meaningful. So, we don't have to go over the slides, it's more just to update what you saw last year and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. And I'll take notes.
Mr. Demling?
So, looking at these slides, I'm not sure if the input I have to provide is exactly what you're looking for, but I'll just give it anyway and then you can tell me whether you can shelve it for something else. So I was thinking, not necessarily in terms of like technical budget line items from terms of content areas, like I think last year, one of them was the, was the sports offerings, right? So I was thinking kind of along, okay, good, so I'm not off the rails, right? So the two things I was interested in seeing is, the first is our performing arts. And I think of this for a couple of reasons. One is, so related to what we were sort of talking about earlier with communications, you know, we obviously spend a lot of time talking about PVCS charter school because they're trying to expand. At the region, we actually spend quite a bit more on PVPAs and students, so local charter school that focuses on performing arts. And I just happen to be lucky to have had three kids go through the schools, each of whom have had different experiences, different aspects of the arts from seventh through 12th, and just been constantly amazed at the breadth of offering, the quality of our, of our faculty and the way at which it integrates with students with special needs and in the classroom and how, you know, there's certain key events that bring everything together. So, the sort of roll-up I would want to see from that from a budget perspective, and this might involve like maybe the performing arts director or the creative arts director, about, you know, what's sort of the state of the offerings for, you know, one, not just, you know, it would include like a list of like what we offer, but also, you know, when you sort of look for the next three to five years and the health of the program, what is it that is going to be key to support that? So this could be, you know, middle school electives, this could be equipment, it could be staffing concerns, those sorts of aspects.
Just a quick follow-up, I think that's a good one and one of the things I hear a lot is sort of the facility needs, you know, the auditorium seats, we've all sat in those, those are not great for performances. There's some lighting things that we've done recently, but I know there's more to do with lighting that I've heard from Mr. Beck told. So I think we probably want to fold like the facility needs aspect of that into, into it as well.
Yeah, so, okay, so that would be good. I'd also want to give maybe Mr. Beck told the opportunity to speak a little more broadly about, because I know like sometimes in the middle school, what's offered there can change depending on schedule constraints and that's because that is one of the key grades at which parents and students make the choice whether to continue on. It's interesting and I think about this in a budget perspective too because of that ROI, that cost-benefit analysis, that, you know, it's 18K a year for one kid and if you're, say you're a communications physician, if you retain one kid in seventh grade, that's potentially 18K times six years, right? So that's one. And the other one is this sort of health and wellness theme that we've been talking about recently. This is sort of directly related to your superintendent draft goal number six. And it's, it's kind of coming from a place that I don't have a great sense of what our health curriculum looks like right now and where it's delivered. And this might vary whether you're talking middle school or high school, it might be advisory, it might be a quote-unquote health class, it might be part of some other class. And it could take a number of forms, like when I grew up, health class was like taught by the teacher and it was a just say no to drugs and, you know, and abstain from sex. That was, that was what it was. Obviously, we have a much different and broader area of concern. In our community, you know, we have more progressive values, you know, we have student leaders representing on LGBTQ inclusion, the Sega Club, kids that went to New Jersey, you know, we've talked about technology and how it's rapidly evolved and become part of our students' lives, how do they manage that interruption? The recreational drugs, you know, we have pot legal now across the river, you know? And so what does that mean in terms of the philosophy and approach of how we educate kids about recreational drugs? To not stigmatize it and yet not encourage it, how do we approach that? There's some really interesting things there that may require budget investment. You know, Canada has recently legalized and I was looking into some of the things and they spent a lot of time coming into develop a modern curriculum of how do you talk to teens about, about drugs in a way that's not a binary, you know, this is good or this is bad thing. And, you know, there's other things in terms of emotional health, some of the issues we were talking about earlier, even late start times is something about the whole child, you know, the, what affects the whole system. And so, again, that general question of what are we doing now? What would you like to do, right? So this is maybe both superintendent and also a teacher kind of question. And what if any impact would there be to the budget? Not necessarily as much of a quantitative return on investment as the charter school, you know, loss is, but obviously a huge personal return on investment. Those are my two things.
So, here's what I'd like to do. I think I'd like to go down the committee and just get people's thoughts. I could either start on the end of the people who were not on the committee last year to go through this process. Why don't I do that? Ms. McDonald? And obviously, if you have any questions about this process, you can ask those two at the beginning.
Excuse me, very bad timing. The, I was actually going to ask if I could go later on because, mostly because of my lack of familiarity with this process. Hearing Mr. Demling's comments, that was helpful to sort of understand, okay, what are we, what are we trying to ask for and look for here? Because I look at these key indicators, which I love these charts and these reports, but they're, a lot of them are things that are sort of beyond the control of, you know, of our analysis. It's more sort of understanding what are the influences and things coming in, but, so I'd rather, if you can come back to me after other folks.
No trouble, no trouble at all. And actually, it's kind of a funny thing, we almost could have said at the beginning that the charts are actually unrelated to the question at hand.
Oh, okay.
Because I think, I know that sounds dumb because they're in there and you'd think they'd be connected, but in fact, the, in fact, the, I think I'm getting this right and if I don't have it right, Ms. Ordonez can change it to something that is right, that the genesis of this was that we tend to start looking at the budget process in December, January as a bunch of numbers and trends on a page and it tended to be divorced from, unintentionally, divorced from the question of how does this exercise of budgeting in a relate to the core mission goals that we have as a district? Whether they are things like, you know, counseling and support and services or whether it's part of our curriculum and programming academically. And, and we wanted to find a way in which we could have a more informed process to really dig into. into how our budget priorities are impacting the classroom, and also, since there's this sort of irritating part of budgeting where we never have enough money, and then we're thinking about, you know, oh, should we add 5,000, should we cut 5,000? And then the question, A, we don't have enough money anyway, and then B, well, what does that even relate to, right? Like, what are the impacts we're trying to shoot for in terms of the classroom, and what do we do now compared to what happened in two or three years from now? And so this was at least our attempt to try to improve that dialogue by picking substantive programmatic areas, and they could be directly academic in the classroom, but they don't have to be, they could be something elsewhere as a program area in the budget, whatever you think. Did I get that right, Ms. Ordonez, basically?
Yeah.
Cool. So it's Mr. Manino, now we're going to move the other direction and pick on you.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Can I just have one slight addendum?
Of course.
Not to be accepted, but just, so I think the only thing I'd add is that the slides that Mr. Mangano presented are likely not connected to what's decided here, but I don't want to preclude people from saying, "I really want to dig in on health insurance," right? I see that chart, and it's a huge part of our budget, and we got an update last year. I'm not promoting that idea, but I also don't want to preclude committee members from saying, "Actually, I need more detailed information than what's on these charts and these things." So that's my two cents, it's obviously your decision, but I could imagine in other committees, frankly, some of the feedback has been, we want to dig in on this thing. It's not how the region has typically done it, but I don't think it'd be inappropriate for us to ask us to come back with that.
No, I think the challenge is, I mean, if you look at all the slides, I mean, the challenge is chapter 70 trends, regional transportation stuff.
Right.
You know, I would do be a waste of time to talk about it. Even, in my personal opinion, I guess I'm offering my opinion, even on like vocational and charter, there are other venues at our own meetings in which we talk about what those trends look like and whether there are things we should be doing that could positively impact those enrollment trends. I think health insurance and payroll are probably more uniquely suited to discussions on the board, but even, I mean, the committee, but even there, we just concluded negotiations on contracts, and so I'm not sure that on the wage trends, there's as much that we can do functionally in that area. So, I mean, I think, so not to sound funny about it, but I mean, even healthcare, since we spent a lot of time talking about healthcare last spring, and my God, there's only so much we can do there too.
Right, yeah.
I don't make it sound like I'm arguing with you, I don't mean to be. I just mean, I don't think I was totally out to lunch in my comment.
No, I didn't mean for you to feel that way, it's not what I was trying to do.
I'm not personally hurt.
Good.
But you have given Mr. Manino a little extra time to think about his answer.
Because we talked about it earlier tonight, sport. What is the expenditure on sports and clubs? We mentioned that majority of students play at least one sport in club. What is the expenditure on sport above and beyond the fees reimbursed? And I don't think this is part of the budget process, but I raised the question, what good is sports? And somebody said, "Well, it's educational, it's empowering, it's self-esteem, it's all kinds of other stuff." Could that be addressed?
So that was one that we actually did last year? So when you're talking about it, it might, some of these, maybe we could just resend out those presentations from last year, because I think there were a couple of good presentations on clubs and athletics.
I was a student that day.
But it's a big one.
Oh, I mean, it's, you know, the idea of academics versus sport or performing arts, I mean, there are all kinds of intangible outputs. The output isn't the class taught or a sport taken, I just thought that, and because I've never participated in a sport, which is obvious, I always looked down from afar, I'd like it to be discussed, but if it's already covered, we covered it.
Ms. Charnis?
So, yeah, I just, I wanted to, I guess, state, you know, for what it's worth, I mean, looking at these charts were actually really helpful just to understand the trends, and for me, that was what was happening with the transportation reimbursement in particular in chapter 78. You know, we have taken, I think, a more active role in advocating on behalf of the schools, right, with our local and state elected leaders, and that's actually, you know, was heartening for a little while, and then things took a turn for the worse, right? Mr. Demling and I sat through several meetings with our local state elected reps. So I think that, you know, beyond, as Mr. Nakajima says, or stating the obvious, you know, and marking those trends, there's not a lot that I would say about that, it's just really disappointing, and I think for us, you know, it's not a budget guidance question so much as where can the committee maybe lend some, you know, pressure and some expertise, quote-unquote, moving forward in continuing to advocate, right? And maybe, you know, tapping the community a little more than we already have to take action on some of these things and put some pressure, hopefully where they are. I think it also will help that we have new leaders in our government, both at, you know, our local level, but also at our state level, who hopefully have been hearing enough about this, who ran on platforms that were connected directly to the importance of understanding chapter 70 funding and, you know, regional transportation in particular, but also just with things like charter schools and all of that, that, you know, they bring that awareness to Boston in this upcoming legislative year, and hopefully by next year, we start to see some changes in that. Anyway, I'll get off the soapbox for that. I think that, you know, in terms of budget guidance, you know, a lot of the questions that keep coming up, that I think, you know, that we've continued to grapple with as a committee, have been particularly around issues related to diversity and related to equity. I, you know, I think it's great to hear the report from Ms. Cunningham tonight and from the superintendent articulating our path forward in a lot of this, and also stating, you know, we frankly could use some help, right? And that's what I'm hearing too, is that there's, you know, there's some room there for improvement and for growth. So if we can look at ways of helping to fund those things, and for all the reasons that I stated before, I mean, I think, you know, these are values that our community holds, and I think, you know, for most of us, we are sort of on the same bandwidth in terms of understanding why these things are important, but it's also practically speaking about supporting our students and, you know, supporting our educators and helping them be better students and better educators and better administrators, right? So ultimately, for me, practically speaking, it's about that, it's about giving them the skills and the mindset that they need to feel successful and to actually do a good job when they are here in school, and, you know, to hopefully increase, you know, all of the things that we want to see, right? You know, from literacy rates to, you know, graduation rates to success in future careers, whether they go to college or otherwise. So I think all those things are important for us to continue and reflect in our budget, and I'm interested in doing that. I think, you know, specifically, the, you know, restorative justice program, I think is incredibly important, and we're seeing some, this is sort of the blossoming of something that I'm hopeful can actually make us, you know, kind of stand out from the rest in terms of what we can offer our students and our community. This is, you know, extremely difficult times that we're going through in our country, right? And we're seeing a lot of, you know, students expressing this frustration and hurt and difficulty dealing with a lot of the issues that are coming from, whether it's, you know, gender, you know, sexuality concerns, whether it's, you know, race and ethnicity, immigration status, all of those things, and they have a real impact on their learning and also just in their success, you know, as students and as community members. So I want to see us doing better with that. I think, you know, we have already taken a position of saying we want to do better. So what does that actually look like, you know, this upcoming year? I think that that's incredibly important. And then, you know, I do think that, thinking a little bit more also about some of our core subjects, you know, I raised a question before about, you know, math, and it's great to hear that we're going to be hearing more about that. You know, I know that there's been some concerns raised by the community around, you know, some of our health classes and, you know, sort of what's being taught there. I think any opportunities that we can take to continue to support all students, you know, through AP placements, through, you know, just, you know, better sex education, you know, different health, you know, concerns and issues, that we should take those opportunities to do that. So I think in terms of budget guidance, that's basically where I am right now. I also understand that we are, you know, potentially in uncharted waters, because we don't understand what the healthcare costs are going to look like next year, you know, we've tried to stabilize that, we've done a pretty good job of it, but, you know, it's still, it's still kind of a murky place, right? So I do think it's important for us to stay on top of that and to continue to understand what's happening there and to, you know, get more, you know, or frequent reports, as we've been doing, just to hear what's happening. But, you know, I do think as far as the superintendent and our finance director can articulate a path forward on these other things while still keeping this general environment, you know, in mind, that would be helpful.
On the utilities, I don't need it blown out again, but I'm just curious, is that solar farm online in South Deerfield now?
We started it in the savings.
Oh, cool. That took a little while.
Four years.
And the other question, how are we doing on the natural gas?
In what respect?
Like, when we switch from oil and natural gas, are we still going to see some savings from the?
Yeah, so at the high school, middle school, natural gas, we actually are in the process of locking into a contract, which the rates are good, lower than what we were projecting, so that's been promising. Oil prices did come down, but they started to creep up a little bit again, so there's still savings going to natural gas over oil. So I think for the region, both schools being on natural gas has been a good thing, if you look at it, compared to our heating costs before we switched over.
Thank you.
Anything you want to hear about?
In jumping on the curriculum bus, when we cut those two healthy programs last year and had to cut staff also, you kept, under your breath, mentioning that you hoped it wasn't, that you thought it could be worse the following year, which is, I never wanted to ask you what that meant. So I stayed away from that question, I didn't want to hear the answer, but now I think it's time to hear if we're going to have to do the same thing again.
So I think we'll talk about this in the next agenda item, a little more specifically, if that's okay with you.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
So I would like to endorse what Mr. Demling's interested in hearing about wellness. I like the arts thing too, but, and what I would love, I don't, I guess, I guess the truth is, I would be happy for you to present that in whatever manner your staff, your team would naturally present it. What I mean by that is, to me, my assumption is, if you're impacting the entire student body, then that conversation, that, your methodology could go anywhere from actual counseling and support for people who need it, who really need it, straight through more academic settings in which you're engaging a broad population, which you may not have any particular, like if you have 20 kids in a room, you don't have any particular reason to know any of them have any issues, but you're still wanting to engage them and familiarize them with general principles of wellness and whatever modality you're doing it. So my point is, I'm opening it up to the question of, what's, how would you present that conversation right now, you're attacking it? I guess my assumption is that there's more than one way to do it, that, actually, more than one way you need to do it in order to be effective. The other thing I would like to hear about is, if this year we're doing a strategic plan, that means next year we're going to be implementing it. And so I don't know what resources we need or that we think we have, or what our perspective is on being able to support the implementation of that plan. And so to me, that could mean a number of things. That could mean looking at materials and professional development days and how they're allocated. It could actually mean things like communications, because if you got a plan, not only do people need to know about it, but also you still need to have the interactivity of, that's an ongoing process. And then, it seems like, speaking of defunct, or maybe defunct or not defunct subcommittees, you know, we endlessly seem to have had conversations around data and identifying data sources and managing them and analyzing them and making them, you know, transparent. And I say, I say, I introduced that topic in sort of a vague way, because I could understand if you would say, "Well, we don't have money to appropriately resource these areas." What's the guidance you give me, Eric? You're saying you want to put a lot of money into it? And then that would sound stupid, and maybe even more stupid when we get to the next item on the agenda, right? And so I'm not trying to say it in that bounded way. I'm just saying, if you're going to bother in developing a strategic plan, then we have to think about how we're going to implement it, and that almost certainly either has, it has resource implications under any circumstance, meaning if there's no net increase anywhere, then someone's still going to have to be doing work that's allocated towards some aspect of implementation, or it means there is an add or a shift, right? And so getting an understanding of that thinking would be useful, and then I want to drill down specifically into the question of where we think there might be resource needs, and then I specifically do have a question around data. And part of it is just because, again, if we don't think we can do a budget add, and it's just not realistic to do, then we need to answer for ourselves the question of, well, how are we thinking of being able to develop, monitor, and analyze the data and publicly share data over time that's going to be instrumental in creating both consensus as well as momentum around those plans? And I, by the way, I don't have any answers. This is the great thing about asking these questions, is I can just ask the questions and you guys can provide the answers and, you know, I'll try not to peanut gallery it. Cassinson?
All right. When I came in, I was going to ask about athletics, but we don't need to ask about that. And I thought about that specifically because of all the capital improvements that we're wanting to do. I think performing arts would also be a great area, as would wellness, which brings, I do think that, for me, one of the most important things is tying the budget guidance to the goals, because that's what, you know, we've, that is our vision for the district, and so those things are really, so, there's certain, right, with regard to restorative justice and a lot of this, I mean, I think I have questions about what, you know, what parts of the budget would play into that, so maybe a little more information. The wellness goal, that's been brought, because that is a goal. I know we mentioned at our last meeting particularly regarding the new landscape of recreational marijuana that's coming into Amherst, of what the school committee in the district could do to just be a more active part in that, in helping in that process and that conversation. So I think, yeah, that fits into the wellness goal and budget guidance. My last, this is more of a question, I mean, this is budget guidance, I don't know if we do sort of budget look back, because, I mean, looking through these, you know, there are trends, charter school tuition is going down, choice tuition is going down, that's a percentage, I don't know if that means that we're spending more and those things are sort of staying level, or if they're actually, we're spending less, but if we are, what have we done to increase that retention rate? And can we sort of look at it from a critical way to see, to keep up the good work?
And what would be your next?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question, by the way? Can you actually, might be helpful to the committee, where does this meeting fit within the budget process?
Near the beginning.
We have another meeting in a couple of weeks, what are we doing then?
So, this is probably, I think, the first time we've officially talked about the budget guidance. So there's sort of a three-pronged approach that the subgroup came up with last time, so there was the indicators which you have, there's this meeting, which, you know, next month or the month after, we'll have the groups come and report back to you. And then the third part was actually what you mentioned, Ms. Cassinson, about the goals and tying the, how does this current budget support the goals that the superintendent's laying out? So this is near the beginning, I think we're sort of on track-ish. One of the things, I think, we're still sort of feeling out the Amherst budget process this year with the switch over, that does have an impact on the region. I think things are going to move pretty much the same way as they have in the past, but, you know, we're still going to have to feel out that new process with the town council as opposed to a town meeting. Amherst always was at the end before, I don't know if that's still going to be the process, but I think we're on track in terms of the budget process. You'll see initial sort of projections of numbers at the four-town meeting on December 8th, so that'll be sort of your first glance at what the rough gap would look like for next year, so we're on track.
The reason I wanted, the reason, I was going to say, the reason I wanted you to say what you just said, is that based on what you just said, Ms. Cassinson, absent that information, this would look woefully inadequate to begin a conversation around our budget, what our trends are, what our look back is, and all that kind of stuff. And so, and even though I think we're, I'm sure we're fine in terms of where we are in the schedule, I think last year we did this probably a couple of weeks earlier.
Yeah, I think we started, you know, I think we tried to start in October last year, but, you know, given the flow.
No, but the reason I'm just saying that is that if we were having this conversation two or three weeks- conversation two or three weeks ago, the sort of preliminary nature of the conversation would feel more natural. Coming up on, like, you kind of see December in sight, it starts feeling more like, hey, we're moving towards making decisions at some point, and it'll get much more granular and much faster and a lot more information.
Yep. So, just three comments. One is just the raw numbers in the bottom of these charts as well. So, you know, the percentage is the red line, but the raw numbers are included. I think the second thing, and again, I think we talked about this a bit more last year and two years ago, around some of the trends, we did a survey about, for charter choice and private school families, and one of the things that I noted at the time, and is still true now, is that there are these key touchstone moments in the district, and I was surprised, because I've been in the district a while, how many people commented on challenging moments in the district, and just how that made them think about other choices more favorably. And so I do think, you know, this is gonna be a weird thing to say, but I do think the committee has had a large role in promoting a healthy working relationship with the community, and I do think there's a place of, of having that stability and forward movement that has made an impact on some of the areas that you cited. And I think we saw, I saw evidence, because I saw the raw data before it got scrubbed of some of the, I didn't like when, and, you know, people's names were used, so that wasn't released publicly. So I do think there's a lot of reasons why, but I do, but it's my belief that the data showed that that's one of them. I think, the last thing I want to say is, a number of people have mentioned, well, it's gonna, you know, concerns about talking about potential budget adds in what may or may not be a challenging budget year, and I actually think there's more reason to actually talk about them. You know, we added the restorative practices position in a bad budget year, we added Chinese last year in a terrible budget year, so I do, I mean, it was a small amount of Chinese, but we did do that. So I don't, you know, just, I appreciate the sense of concern about where our budget sits and, and, you know, fiscal conservative approach about that. At the same time, I think before we get real numbers, before your four-town meeting, and even after the first one, I think if there's something the committee feels urgency about for the district, I don't, I don't know, and it sounds weird, but I just don't want people to have to feel apologetic about saying, I think there may be a need here, and, and, you know, we can work on it, I'm not saying we can deliver on it, there's a lot of variables, but it also helps us when we talk to our constituents, and, you know, and me, for it's mostly staff and some parents, but you, in your different roles, to say, these are the types of things that we're fighting for, you know, that we feel like our community needs, and not be in the kind of deficit mentality of cuts. So, for what it's worth, I just, I noticed a couple of people very respectfully saying that, and there's no critique of it, it's actually just, I'd rather actually have that stuff on the table, so when we have those conversations, it's out there instead of, you know, withholding.
I think at least for myself, the reason I mention it a couple of times, is that since all of our meetings are kind of public dialogues, I didn't really feel like having a conversation in which a very reasonable public critique would be, you spend a half an hour talking about multi-hundred thousand dollar ads in an environment in which there's no sense of where the money's coming from?
Absolutely.
And it is, otherwise it seems utterly divorced from reality.
Yeah.
And so I preferred to talk more about tasks that we need to get, like, on the strategic planning stuff.
Yeah.
If we don't have an answer to how we're thinking about implementing it, and monitoring how we're implementing it and doing that, that's a bad answer whether there's a budget add or not.
That's right.
And so, you know, I'd rather, like, same thing with wellness and legal marijuana and stuff, right? Ms. McDonald, we're catching up to you.
And I'm always coughing as soon as I start talking. So I would endorse the, and sort of add my voice to some of the areas that others have mentioned, including the performing arts. I haven't seen the sports in the past, so I would love to, if it's, you know, just repurposing something from the past, I'd love to see that, and wellness, so I'll just add my voice to those. I did have one quick clarifying question on the, on the budget indicators, and then another question, and I don't know if it's appropriate for what we're talking about now, but my clarifying question is, the wages and benefits, and there's a comment that it's that increase seventeen to eighteen is health insurance cost, can I, does that mean that the next page, that that health insurance cost spending is actually a subset of that first chart?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like there's some increase also in eighteen beyond just the health insurance cost, so I would be curious, and this kind of leads into my next question, be curious to understand sort of what's driving the rest of those increases beyond the health insurance, because it looks like it's still about three or four hundred thousand in my, doing the math in my head. But my, and my question is, is some of the things, is I, intrigued and curious about the conversation that Mr. Nakajima brought up about data, because it does come up repeatedly, and then it kind of links off there with somewhat into communication and strategic planning, but data is, is important, and if it's just one bullet point on the gazillion things that our fabulous HR department is doing, is there opportunity, and I don't know to what extent, and being absolutely new to this, I apologize, but to what extent consultants or short-term contract positions are used and leveraged for some of these, these kinds of non-curricular, non, sort of completely ongoing, you know, administrative leadership positions such as data, data crunch, data analysis, or even, even bringing in some of the, you know, website maintenance and, you know, just communications maintenance, if you will. So those are, you know, I don't know to what extent those fold into that wages and benefits, and the, the understanding sort of the full-time versus temporary contracting consultant, and to what extent we use and leverage those sort of one-off opportunities to get work done, basically, that we can't really envision bringing up a full-time position for.
So, I can start, or you want to start?
Yeah, I think on the wages piece, I'll, I can bring back more information next time. I mean, some of that's just the, the regular step and call that all staff get every year, but there's probably a little bit more information to go with that. And then on the contracted piece, so that's not obviously included in the wages piece, I'm trying to think if we have any types of contracts. I know we have done one like that in the past, I'm thinking the U-Chicago thing we did a few years ago, but I don't think we have any currently.
So we do contract with the collaborative, who do support us with the website development, and they do, you know, some of the setup and the core kind of technical features. But I think, yeah, I agree with Mr. Mangano, I don't think we have thought of contracting out, and some of it, when it gets to data and student data, that gets really sort of complicated with student rights and privacy, and you can sign that disclosure, but we tend to be quite sensitive about what we do with student data, because there's no way to crunch it without having some identifiable piece, unless we put up protocols that end up being more costly, like, you know, for a consultant to do the work, it tends to be quite costly. Certainly something we could come back to for future dialogue and conversation if the committee would like.
Great, thanks. We're gonna move on. We have a busy agenda, we have a lot more to do.
So should, should we use sort of our judgment and pick, somehow roll these together to bring back to you?
Yes.
Okay. So if we don't get to all of them, that's okay. I mean, there's themes of what we've heard, we may not be able to get to all of them sort of in that one type of meeting, but we'll do our best to address as many as we can.
Okay, I'll add my question. What next? What do you plan to bring back to us?
For this?
For, for all these concerns that have been mentioned, performing arts, wellness...
Yeah, so for performing arts, we'll have Mr. Beck told, who runs the performing arts program, come and speak to you about what he does, all the offerings, the challenges that he faces, sort of from a supply facility standpoint, and then address your questions, you know, you'll have deeper questions that you'll want to go into when you hear that presentation, and he'll, so it'll give you a better understanding of the performing arts program, so when you see what it costs, and if there's a, you know, ad, or if you want ad funds, you'll have a better context for hearing that.
Great. Oh, why sit down? Oh, you're not sitting down, good, smart man. Regional assessment, four-town meeting discussion.
Yeah, so the four-town meeting is December 8th, I want to say, Saturday morning, upstairs in the library, the middle school, and we're hoping everyone can attend, and they're critical for those of you, I'm just gonna say it out loud for those people who may not have been at four-town meetings. There are opportunities for this, in the past, I have to amend it a little for Amherst now, but in the past, it's been select board, finance committee, school committee to come together to hear about the financial condition of the schools, talk about the year going forward, talk about assessment methodology and financial overview and outlook. And so there've been critical meetings around the four towns coming together to align the four towns, the needs of each town, and trying to figure out how to fund the regional school district, both operational and capital budgets. In this particular year, and I'll start and you can jump in, but I think, you know, what we're planning to present is multiple budget scenarios. So just going back to last year, you may remember that we, the agreement between the four towns was to have twenty percent of the statutory method rolled in, so that happened last year. There was not agreement between the four towns on what was to happen this year. Some towns assumed that would go up to forty percent, it was a five-year roll-in, straight to, going to statutory. Other towns openly stated that they did not agree with that approach. We've gotten budget guidance from two of the communities. Amherst has given us a two and a half percent increase as budget guidance, and Leverett has given one and a half percent as budget guidance. And as you all know, that there's a relational formula, so those two things don't necessarily mean that the, the, one and a half percent in one town doesn't mean two and a half percent in another town, because they're in relation, so I'll...
No, go ahead. I mean, they both can't be true, most of the time.
Yes.
A hundred percent of the time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I went to a Leverett finance committee meeting, so we got the guidance from them. They are in another tough sort of financial year, so the one and a half, you know, there were talks of going to two, they settled on one and a half, because they do have some significant financial hurdles that they have to deal with this year. Another wrinkle this year that may, you know, I welcome your input on in terms of designing the presentation, it's gonna be a little bit of a different dynamic, because we're gonna have thirteen town counselors, some of which this is gonna be brand-new for, you know, this was sort of, we had the same select board members for a long time, they're very well-versed in this, now we're gonna have thirteen counselors, some of which have experience, some of which this is gonna be brand-new. So designing that presentation, or trying to bring out the speed sort of on that, will be, you know, I'm open to your suggestions on what we should think about for that. But, yeah, we're gonna design that presentation to show multiple options, the twenty percent, the forty percent, you know, what if we hit Amherst guidance, what if we hit Leverett guidance, and we'll be open to feedback from the towns if there's other things they want to consider.
Do you expect to get guidance from Shutsberry and Pelham before then?
Pelham doesn't give formal guidance to us specifically, but they sort of have a running guidance of two and a half percent, sort of, sort of what they want us to stay within, to be sustainable.
You kind of feel like you already have that guidance now?
Yeah.
So what about Shutsberry?
Shutsberry has not issued us formal guidance the last few years. I have called their town administrator just to check in, see how things are going, but we haven't received formal guidance from them for a few years.
And I just want to put perhaps a finer point, and that one of the critiques in the past has been the presentations have been hinged, you know, or the models have been shown always assume that Amherst guidance, the town of Amherst guidance dictates the other three, and in reality, it doesn't work that way, but since they give formal guidance, we've done that, and we're trying to be responsive to that feedback by showing multiple scenarios with the towns we have formal guidance from, and what it would do to all four towns, so that, it's gonna be a longer presentation with more models, but we think it's responsive to make sure that we're being fair to all the communities.
Can I ask a stupid question? I know it's a stupid question, but I don't really care. What would happen if you built a budget that included a two and a half percent increase from Pelham, a two and a half percent increase from Amherst, a one and a half percent increase from Leverett, and whatever the heck that would mean?
Two and a half.
And two and a half from Shutsberry, what would that look like? Is that even, presumably that's not actually mathematically impossible to calculate.
Right, it's not mathematically impossible, the, I don't know if it's a long-term thing, so you have to, in your regional agreement, you have to have some sort of method. So as a one-year solution, something like that's possible, you'd have to think about how to write the amendment to the regional agreement, but that's not impossible, they actually did that for a few years, they had like equal increases every year to all four towns. But long-term, the regional agreement needs some sort of method.
But I don't even care if it's equal. I mean, what I'm seeing is, if, what I'm seeing is, is if Shutsberry, Pelham, and Amherst all say two and a half, and Leverett for whatever peculiarity of their financial circumstances say one and a half, I mean, let me put it this way, let me rephrase what I'm saying, one of your slides should show that.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
And the reason I'm saying this, I'm gonna be very blunt, because we've already gone through this a couple of years now, and certainly last year, I don't know what that would show, but for the sake of argument, if two and a half percent increases in three towns, and one and a half percent increase in the other town, meant we didn't have to cut our budget?
Sure.
And we could actually meet our needs without going through some ghastly experience this coming year? It's important to ground ourselves in showing that, that basically the rest of the argument on what the formula is, if all the towns are agreeing, if they did, that they would be willing to pay those increases, then I'd like to see what that looks like on paper, to understand whether that would be enough to meet our needs. It might not, it might actually mean with, you know, all the other increases we have, it might still put us slightly underwater, or it might be treading water, maybe, I don't know what it would show, you guys will do the analysis. But I would love to have that starting point, because I understand the idea that creating different, adopting different formulas has floated implications from one town to another, but there's really been two parallel exercises we've been going through in the last couple of years. One has been what formula feels or is fair, and should we adopt philosophically? The other one is, how do we pay for our, our school budget, right? And those two have interwoven in a way that I think's very unhealthy, is that we can contemplate circumstances that we need to cut our budget, but in fact, if you pop back for a second from a broader perspective and say, wait a minute, what's everyone said they're willing to pay? Oh, well, the willingness to pay actually would meet our needs. Well then, why the hell are we cutting our budget? Right? I mean, there's, there's a, there's sort of an unreality to that exercise, and so at the very, and I, and I understand why it's not exactly unreal. There is a statute around this, there are guidances around the, whatever. But I'm just saying, one of those, one of those slides should show that, and by the way, if it shows we're underwater anyway, then that would, should even be more bracing, that when we're looking around these different formulas, whatever, I'll stop there. Is there a done, is it Mr. Demling?
Sure. So your hand, maybe you went up first?
I don't know.
Okay. So, you know, I think, having sat through, I think, maybe three of these meetings so in the past few years, it's become really apparent that I think we have very different perspectives on this, this process, and how this process should be run, and even, I think, at the end of the day, I think everyone that's in that room is, you know, more or less on the same page in saying, we want to make sure that our schools are well-funded, and that we're doing the best that we can for our kids. That said, I also think that there's so many different competing perspectives and interests that we end up sort of talking at each other, and my experience has been that we've actually just come up with these sort of stop-gap solutions to, you know, just stop, stop the water from flowing through the dam, you know, too quickly, right? Like, let's just, you know, try to mitigate to the best of our ability some of the financial realities of, of these, you know, different towns, these different communities, and that doesn't get us at a long-term process. It doesn't help us, you know, have, you know, beneficial conversations, I guess, in the long term, right? Because we're constantly saying, okay, well, you know, we're negotiating during the process, and I think that that, that can be healthy, but it also makes it a lot harder for the district to be able to plan in long-term, because you, you never know what's gonna happen from your year. We're always back in this conversation of like, okay, well, now we have to go to this, you know, four-town meeting and hope for the best, right? And, you know, and do our best to negotiate, and, so, you know, I think in laying out the framework, what I'm most interested in hearing is a, you know, a kind of a, almost like a review to refocus everybody, like, you know, can, can we at least agree that we want to work towards making sure that our schools are the absolute best schools that they can be, and that we are committed to the mission and the values of, of our school district, and start from there, right? Like, it's almost like, you know, bringing everybody back to what's important and saying, let's have that conversation first. I don't want to dwell on it, because I'm not a Pollyanna, you know, kind of person, like, I don't think it's worthwhile to delve too deeply into something like that, but I do think it might help, hopefully, some of the psychology of the people that are in the room, like, just thinking about, you know, this is, the reason why we're having this conversation is because we're actually trying to benefit the health, long-term financial health and stability of our school district, which we all happen to be invested in, literally. So, can we think about, you know, presenting that first, and then think about how do we come to a conversation about, you know, what, what does it take to actually get there, right? right? Like, you know, let's have a frank conversation about what's involved in all of this. And do we feel like, you know, I don't, I haven't gotten a sense since last year that there's been any movement in, in feeling from the different communities about, you know, yes, we are willing to, to pay a little bit more or we're willing to, you know, we've sort of, aside from what you just described with Leverett, I haven't heard anything else from any of the other communities, right? You know, obviously here in Amherst is different. So, you know, is there an opportunity for us to, to have a conversation that feels a little bit more collaborative as opposed to just people, you know, getting pitted against each other and, or feeling that way anyway, right? Like, you know, we're going to pay more, but we're not doing that next year because we paid so much this year, you know? Just feels like it's not contributing at all to the long-term health of that. So I think it just, I think we need to think a little bit about framing. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that it was actually in my, from my perspective, helpful to have the school committee play a prominent role in the meeting last year. Years prior, the tenor of the conversation was actually very different. It felt a lot more like sort of, you know, there was a little bit more tension and animosity about, you know, sort of being there, having the school committee kind of at the front of the room, you know, having the chair there, playing a central role in managing the conversation seemed to feel, and I don't know if Dr. Morris and Mr. Magano agree, but it, you know, it felt to me anyway like it was really important to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. And I think that conversation probably should take place before we show people numbers. We really want people to have that conversation sort of, without having that sort of filter first. Because once we show them options and they see, then it's sort of lost.
I agree.
Yeah, and I would just, to the point of school committee involvement, absolutely. And I think a line that Mr. Magano and I try to, to stay clear of is that while we're advocating for the schools, and at times, and I'm glad you mentioned last year because it felt better last year, but at times, you know, we've spoken and we felt like we've gotten pushed into conversations and we have to be careful not to be, we're not representatives of any town, we're representatives of the region. So we're actively looking for school committee members to play large roles, not just in the, you know, and Mr. Nakajima did a great job last year in terms of facilitation, but even when we go into small groups. Because, you know, we're interested in the health of the district and you are as well, but we also are not, we can't be advocates of, well, this method goes, you know, and just maybe taking a step back for people who haven't been through it. So the school committee recommends a method and a budget, and that's what goes to the four towns, whether it passes or fails, as opposed to a town budget, which is slightly different in how that, how it functions where it's just sort of a dollar, a dollar amount gets voted and goes to the town. This one, both the assessment methodology and the budget number, numbers go to the towns for a vote. And so we are actively looking for firm involvement from committee members, you know, both at the front end, which we can, I think, simulate last year and I think that was successful, but also in the small groups, because you're, you're the collective body that's going to end up voting on these and we look to you to advocate and help towns come to that conclusion. And I think the feedback's good on the framing and we can certainly do that as well in terms of the front end of the meeting.
So to make this, our current meeting efficient, we got to go to Mr. Demling, but then after him, I want to just go around the table and get people's feedback or input on this or questions, it could be anything, so that we could move through this side of productivity. Sheilman?
Yeah, so just to comment a couple of ideas that are brought up in terms of what might make this more, most efficient. It's, it's a really interesting dynamic. I didn't, I didn't think about it that deeply until Mr. Demling has brought this idea up, that we're trying to do two things at the same time. One is get through the crisis, or what always feels like a crisis of the current budget year, my gosh, we need everybody to agree on something, please, and then by the skin of our teeth getting out and yay, we did it! And then having to do the whole thing over again. So, and so not wanting to spend so much time on just getting agreement on a one-year without paying any attention to a long-term solution. And yet, I feel it's a bit of a paradox because I feel like until we settle the, the one-year, like the current budget year, there, there is that natural defensiveness. I mean, if, if Leverett is coming and saying 1.5% and we're firm on that and we actually have a hard budget year, I, I can't see an unclenching of that concern that's right in front of them to, in order to talk more broadly about, you know, what they value in schools and what the three-to-five-year priority is. So I was really intrigued by Mr. Nakajima's idea of, well, why not just show the guidance that every town has come with and say, this is, this is a model? And, and who knows? Maybe politically it, it won't fly, but it would at least show that we're honoring and respecting where towns have said that they're coming from, right? Because there's so much, I mean, I've only been involved in this process for two years, but there's so much bad blood in some respects with, and, and history here, that the, the level of mistrust is pretty high coming in. And there's so many people at these meetings that the potential for real, open, back-and-forth understanding dialogue, changing of minds is, is pretty low in that, in that context. So I, so I kind of feel like, starting from a position where we're, we're not attacking each other, we're saying, okay, you've said 1.5%. You've said 2.5%. You said this is what it looks like. If, if we were ever able to get to a point where, where that budget looked manageable, we could then, that would, that would take care of that. It's, it's off the mind. And then we could start thinking about, about long-term and, you know, are, are we going to go to 40% statutory and whatnot? I just feel like that second conversation is so hard to have when there's so much protection over an individual budget. And in terms of process, I, I do agree that I liked when Mr. Nakajima, you and Ms. Kastensky were at the front of the table and directing that. I thought that was a good thing. And I also, I think, and the, the variable this year, the new variable of the town council coming in, maybe presents an opportunity to, to even clarify that process because you kind of have the built-in excuse of here's, you know, up to 13 people that are completely new to the process. And so it makes sense that you would say, well, what are we doing here? We're the regional school committee and we recommend a, a method and a budget and, you know, and so we're here to get your feedback on that. So you sort of lay out for the newbies, right, what the expectations are. And that sort of applies to the rest of the group of what we are actually doing. And so this is how we're going to proceed. We're going to do item A and then item B and Mr. Magano's going to present this information and then we'll, so it might be an opportunity to improve that process.
Yeah, and I think, by the way, for 11 out of 13 of those town councilors, they are actually literally going to be new to at least the last couple of years of four-town meetings. So I think there's a huge, huge, huge majority who are like that in that position. Interesting. Shmeneo, we're going to move around the table.
I'll wait for the political forces to play themselves out in terms of what each town is willing to pay. I don't anticipate a long-term solution ever unless we move to the all statutory method, which I guess would be a long-term solution. It's a political process.
Mr. Solomon?
I have nothing to add to this.
I've been to some four-town meetings before, not last year, so I think, yeah, so I think having the school committee taking a bigger role sounds great. It's been helpful for me to be on this side of the table since I've never been, yeah, just attended, but haven't been a part of the process.
Is it fun?
It's not fun.
Because welcome to this side of the table.
I appreciate the, the perspective though from all of you who've spoken, so thank you. That's all I'm just saying.
Ms. McDonald?
I, I don't have anything to add.
My only, the only thing I'd add, again on it, is like, and I don't know if I said it right earlier, or said what I was thinking earlier, is, and actually, I think it'd be helpful, I don't know if you could, but if you could do an analysis of what the budget would look like and share it with this committee in advance of the four-town meeting, I'd kind of actually appreciate it because I don't honestly, like, like in your head, do you have a sense of whether that gets us anywhere close to?
Yeah, I think.
What our budget needs are going to be?
I think that will be a advantageous method for the region for one year. My concern is that it's not tied to sort of a.
No, 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 no. It's not a question I'm asking. I'm just saying, you say, A, you think you could work out that math and show it to the committee?
Absolutely, but I just want to finish that one point.
And two, you think it might actually be a decent status quo budget in terms of the numbers?
Yeah, I do. But the, the one piece is just for the next year, when you, say we try to apply a logic, the more you sort of have a method that is not based on a logic, the farther you have to go to get back to something. So that's just the one sort of pitfall to keep in mind, that if, if we just say we increase everybody, you know, X percent, the next year you say, no, we're going to tie it to enrollment, that means somebody's going to probably have a bigger adjustment period to, to go through.
I understand that, but I mean, I guess part of why I really want, A, to see the numbers so we know what it looks like, and then B, to potentially have that as part of the conversation we're having with the four towns, is, in my personal view, we're, we're in a really unhealthy place with this conversation where it is conceivable that we might actually, and again, that's why I want to see the math.
Sure.
Is it conceivable that all four towns might be willing to pay what we need to to maintain our budget, but will choose not to and will force us to make cuts because we can't agree on a formula on a page that would get us in their minds to fairly pay what they've already said they're willing to pay. And I'm, and that may sound a little silly, but what I'm backing that away from is the idea is that I would argue that one of the principles I would like to follow is that we're not going to butcher our budget or cut it for basically no good reason. And I'm sorry to put it that way and that, if I'm not going to say this at the four-town meeting, I know this is on camera, but I mean, if, if I said it at the four-town meeting, people would yell at me and say, it's not for no good reason, it's actually for excellent principles and here are all the principles. So that's probably too extreme on my part. So if I, if I dial it back a little, what I would argue is maintaining a stable budget environment that's predictable and is able to provide, retain staff, retain a level of quality services that we think we need for the best interest of our district is in fact, in a really important value along with having predictability and fairness around whatever methodology we're assessing towns. And, and even though I know at the end of the conversation we had with the four towns, there was near unanimity, not unanimity, but near unanimity that, you know, that that was really important and that towns were committing themselves to say, we want to make sure that the resources are there. I almost want to front-load that in the conversation and say, look, based on what you've all said you're willing to pay, it would get us to this budget. Now, I recognize that that doesn't change the obligation to figure out a long-term solution, but it is an equal and important principle, and I would argue more important principle, to say that we should have, that if there's no reason to do harm, like massive increases in our healthcare expenditures or whatever, why are we, right? Like, let's, there should be a do-no-harm principle around creating continuity in our budget. If you have a huge recession and revenues are falling off a cliff and state aid is being dramatically cut, which could happen, it's happened before, it could certainly happen again, then you're making decisions that you simply can't avoid and have to make because there's no way the town, which is also under duress, towns that are also under duress can ever make up the shortfall in budget. And so you're forced to make budgetary decisions that are really gruesome, but also absolutely necessary because the money's not going to come from anywhere, right? In an environment in which you're not faced with that circumstance, then there should be a prudential principle that the towns follow around trying to come to an agreement that doesn't unduly harm the operating budget while also finding a pathway. And I think the conversation, I don't want to, I don't want to feel like I'm lecturing anyone, throwing that out, but it makes absolutely no sense to start from a framework of abstract principle and abstract ratios and say, where, where do we want to end up on these abstract ratios when in fact, some of them are going to do, could do undoubtedly significant harm to our operating budget? And, and again, if you start with the budget guidances, that'll tell you upfront, where are, where are we actually in terms of the ability of the towns to pay? Now, how do we get there in terms of what the ratios should look like? So I know that was long, but I mean, this is, this, but the reality is we don't need another working group because another working group is not going to, not going to succeed. And so if that's not going to succeed, then what's really the goal of the school committee, in my opinion? The goal of the school committee is to ensure we have the resources we need to be able to support the budget, knowing the fiscal picture of the towns. What gets us there? Let's figure that out.
Two very brief comments. So one, you know, just thank, thank you all for the conversation because this is the kind of feedback we were looking for is, you know, what kind of presentation, how to model it, how to frame it. That's the reason we put it on the agenda for today is, you know, we haven't always had meetings to talk about four-town meeting before it happened, so this was really helpful. And I think to a lot, to one of the points you made, Mr. Nakajima, I think we're, we are trying to position ourselves by providing information to the four towns in, in very clear and as I described earlier, perhaps in more iterations to be more fair and share more information with the towns. And I think that's, the conversation needs to happen from it. And I wonder, and it's truly an I-wonder statement, whether the committee, because I heard a couple of people, in my opinion, imply and then one more explicitly, would it make sense to have a school committee meeting half an hour before the four-town meeting so that you all will be well-versed and be able to see, not just see the information, but ask questions beforehand? I'm just conscious that seeing the slides might look different than having a discussion. And it's not that something you need to, we need to make a decision on tonight, but certainly something that we could arrange and, and it wouldn't be atypical, other committees sometimes have meetings before this. And, and, you know, I just think for someone getting a lot of slides, because this will be a lot of pretty detailed slides on different assessment formulas, I just, I don't know if a conversation might be helpful directly beforehand.
Sheilman?
You know, for what it's worth, I think that that's actually a really important thing to have happen. I think, you know, it's, it's a Saturday morning and so it's difficult because, you know, people have families and they're working all week and all of that. At the same time, this is kind of what we do here. Like, this is, you know, this meeting, not to, you know, put too fine a point on it, but it is incredibly important for the long-term financial health and stability of the district. And so I think having, you know, the, the committee, I think, as, as close to a full committee there as possible, if not the full committee, would be really amazing. And then I think also on top of that, providing some extra information for the school committee in advance so that it's fresh in our minds, we're coming out of that conversation, you know, would also, I would, I would support that.
Just a couple of points on the, on the town council variable, the more I think of it, with these at least 11 people completely new, and this is a complicated topic, right? Even being in it for a year. You should probably reach out to them so that they can discuss what they want to do about it. Like, it, like, you're either going to need to present to them at their first meeting or they're going to have to have another town council meeting before that, right? Because they get inaugurated on a Sunday and then we meet Saturday, right? That week, they'll have to meet and therefore they'll have to talk about meeting on that Monday. Or you'll have to reach out to them and say, hey, I'm here for you, this is really complicated. You know, this isn't the kind of meeting where you can just, we can have 13 people making 20-minute comments and questions, you know, and to just be there as a resource for them.
Sure.
Because I would, I would hate to be a town councillor who's all wanting to do the right thing and get thrown into that not knowing the importance of everything that we just discussed.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
That helpful?
Yep.
Good. Yes, Shmeneo? When and where is this meeting? It's at the middle school library. It's on December 8th and it's at what time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. So we'd probably be meeting at 8:20 AM, same location. Or you can find a room off to the side.
Yeah, I think we'd likely do that.
Yeah. So, well, just at the middle school.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nearby. RFQ for feasibility, planning at the high school and middle school.
So we did a request for qualifications process for a designer to do the quasi-feasibility study, more of like a building use study of the high school and the middle school with some different grade configurations. So we posted that on September 26th. We received over 20 applications. We had a ton of interest, more than I've ever seen for this type, for any design project. We only received three actual applications for this from J C J Architects, Steffi and Bradley Architects and S M M A. Committee comprised of myself, Ms. Kastenson and Mr. Cody, who's our facility kind quasi-coordinator right now, reviewed all the applications, the technical applications, we reviewed those, evaluated them. Since we only had three, we invited them all in for interviews. We ranked them based on their interview responses. And so the total rankings, based on both the technical piece and the interview piece, was J C J received the highest score, Steffi and Bradley was just a smidge lower than J C J, and then S M M A was a little bit less than those two. So the process for the committee is to select one and approve that hopefully tonight. You can technically select any firm from the list, but if you select somebody other than the first firm, you have to have a written justification for why you selected that firm. And I'm happy to answer any questions and Ms. Kastenson can as well.
Kastenson, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, no, I summed it up, I mean, this was, um, actually really enjoyed being a part of those interviews. It was, um, it was fun, you know, just to see these different visions and what firms can do. Um, and it was difficult. Um, because the two top contenders were very close and they both interviewed really, really well. And what set those two apart for me was their local expertise. Um, so one firm has worked in the district before and had a lot of experience in this particular area. Of like school consolidation or reconfigurations. Um, the other firm maybe hadn't done quite as much work with, um, public schools in this department, but. Um, had someone who locally.
Yep.
Uh, who lives here, so, um, both firms had, you know, really, um. The resources of global architecture firms, so they were, it was a tough decision, yeah.
And I spoke to a reference who actually has worked with both firms and had nothing but good things to say about both firms. Um, uh, and their their work.
Okay, are there, um, questions from the committee? Questions or comments for the committee? Yes.
Uh, I was just going to say that J C J Architects was the firm that was, uh, working with the district around the last elementary school building project. We're correct, okay.
Sorry, I missed what around which project?
The, sorry, the the last elementary school building project.
Okay.
Uh, so but you you were saying it's a matter of state law that if we pick someone other than the first one, we have to provide a.
Written justification for why, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to, uh, accept the RFQ from J C J Architects per the recommendation of the review committee.
Is there a second? So it's moved and seconded, any further discussion? Now would be your opportunity to provide a rationale for not choosing the first recommended vendor. Silence is golden, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Manino.
Benito, aye.
Demling, aye.
Ordona's, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Castinson, aye.
McDonald, aye.
There you have it.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
With two with two not present, obviously unanimous among those who happen to be here. Should be obvious. Uh, is that it for you, Mr. McDonald?
I believe it is.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Um, superintendent goals, I don't know if.
Sure, so I just want to thank also Ms. Castinson for sitting in on that. Design committee, appreciate your time. So in terms of goals, um, so the the differences from the prior version based on the feedback, one is sustained dispelled correctly and number two. So that's a minor difference, but the more content specific, uh, differences are number five and six. So you'll see that it says, you know, for the consideration of grade level spans for secondary buildings, school buildings. That was based on feedback, um, from the last meeting and number six was drawn out much more with. Some sample items that were related to wellness. Um, the original goal was much, much briefer and didn't spell out some potential, what was intended to mean. Wellness was intended to mean in that goal. So those were the three changes that were made based on the feedback from the October regional school committee meeting.
Right, thank you, are there, uh, questions from the committee, Ms. McDonald, anyone?
None for me.
Okay, committee? Don't have to be, I'm just asking, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the superintendent goals for this school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Manino.
Benito, aye.
Demling, aye.
Ordona's, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Castinson, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
It passes unanimously by those who are present. Um, we got this under the wire so we can do your mid review.
Well, this one I've had in three years, so it's all good.
That's right, exactly. Uh, PVC I C S expansion letter. Funny, the title always baffles me. It's like the the non, the opposition to expansion letter. Because it always, it always seems to, I guess it's good to write in the positive rather than the negative, right? Uh, Mr. Demling.
Okay, so, um, this is going to be a bit of duplication for all y'all at the Emmers level, but for the region. Um, if you were here on the region last year, the structure of this letter is quite similar to our final letter from last year. It begins with, uh, summary of our our objection reasons. Um, goes over a little bit of the history, which is highlighted a little more. Um, clearly here, given that we have a new commissioner who, um, and we want to emphasize the fact that there's been consistent. Um, position, uh, on this issue from the past board and commissioners. Um, and then it goes into quite a lot of detail about the demographic, um, shortfalls. Um, again, using Desi's, um, own data. Um, and, uh, and a bit of, um, response to the school's response as to why these aren't problems. Um, and then a sort of a a deep dive summary into into one of the more egregious, um, demographics. If if you're following this along at home and you can't see the paper we're looking at, we're basically, we're talking about. Um, chronic and severe under enrollment of low income students with disabilities, Hispanic students, high need students. Um, and that the special ed disparity is really quite dramatic. Um, so that's sort of called out here as well as some references to some advocacy that some PVC I C S parents had done. Couple of years ago regards to, um, providing a welcoming and supporting environment for special needs students and families.
Mr. Demling?
Hmm?
I mean, just to provide further context for those watching at home. I mean, I know what you said this at the Emerson, uh, school committee meeting. That a particular reason for calling this out, apart from the fact that it's egregious and doesn't match up with. Um, desired goals for our public schools is that in their application. They particularly, you used to mention last time that they particularly called out that they were a, um. You know, a magnet or achievement school for, uh, integration, desegreg, you know.
Yeah, the the quote is in in the proposal to Desi as to why they should expand is to allow students to attend. Desegregated integrated public schools as the school has proven to be an engine of integration in Hampshire County.
Right, so so it's directly pertinent to their current application that in fact the numbers belie kind of radically.
Yes.
Um, the the veracity of that statement.
Yep. Um, and then the the last page, just to finish the summary, um, there's a section about the the finance, uh, formula, which. Uh, is is short because Desi does not have control of it and we we sort of are making the assumption that that is not an argument that particularly resonates with the board or commissioner. But it is something that obviously matters to us and so we include it there. And then the sort of history and annotations at the end.
Okay. Comments or questions in the committee? Mr. Manino?
Um, I just want to say thank you again to Mr. Demond for pulling this together. I think it's a fabulous letter and I really don't have any concerns or, uh, you know, edits or anything like that. I think, uh, the only thing that I would point out is that we heard from both Springfield and Holyoke School Committee members. Um, that this school has appeared to be targeting their districts and communities in particular. And probably to try and help, you know, sort of change the perception of of, um, of their school. And they have been advertising that they are the engine of integration. Um, so this is, these are statements that they're making repeatedly in public, uh, despite the data showing up otherwise. My my only other, uh, the only question I have is, I I guess I'm not familiar with Representative-elect Natalie Blais. I don't know who that is, I'm sorry.
So she, uh, is the newly elected representative who took Stephen Kulik's seat, so she represents.
Franklin.
Uh, yeah, that's a lever and she's very, so at the region comes into.
Thank you.
And she'll rock and roll.
Absolutely, and I I I should make a note, just well, because you bring up Natalie Blais, I was getting the contact information for the new representatives. She specifically calls out fully funding regional transportation, uh, on her campaign website. So if we're worried about, you know, our new representatives understanding what our priorities are, I think we're, I think we're good there.
She's fantastic, she's fantastic, you should actually, you don't know her?
I don't.
You should get to know her, she's really a wonderful person.
Yeah, great.
I mean, they all are, but I mean, she's.
Yeah, and they all seem to be working together too.
Yeah, yeah.
I have Representative Kulik, but not, not.
Yeah. So, um, are there other questions or comments, otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
Um, yep, I'll move to approve our, um, letter opposing the expansion of the PVC I C S.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any additional comments?
Beautifully written, thank you.
It is very well written.
I'll just, that's my my thank you also to Mr. Demling for this, um, great letter, the second one.
Great.
From the Emmers and the regional committee, so it's awesome, great.
You know, and on that note, I think we're going to start with you this time, Ms. McDonald.
Okay, McDonald's, aye.
Castinson, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Ordona's, aye.
Demling, aye.
Benito, aye.
Okay, carries unanimously and can go forth and have great impact, hopefully. Uh.
Yes.
H, 2019, 2020 school year calendar.
So, um. Last year, uh, we decided based on feedback to try to have the school committee approve the following year's school calendar before the end of the calendar year. Based, just as families, staff members really appreciated having the, um, earlier notice typically was more in the springtime. Which for some families was complicated. Um, and so our process that we instituted two years ago is that, um, Ms. Westmoreland does a great job setting up initial draft. We get feedback from our superintendent planning council, which is district directors, from our principals. And then we meet with the Amherst Pelham Association leadership. They then offer feedback and we come up with, um, an agreement to share with faculty. Contractually, uh, the APA takes a vote and they have to affirmatively vote if we're going to have a pre Labor Day start. We've had that for at least 15 years. Did you say?
Yeah.
At least 15 years, uh, but we have to offer a pre and post Labor Day start option to the APA. We had that meeting last week, uh, last Thursday, I think, with the APA leadership. They've now presented these options to the faculty will, they will get us, uh, the response is well before the December, um, regional school committee meeting. But it's an opportunity for you to review, ask any questions. There's really only one substantive change from last year to this year is, or from this year to next year, however you want to think about it. Um, is that if you remember, we had a very hot start of the school year and our first day of school was a half day. And there was a universal feeling among students and faculty that it was a wonderful way to start the school year. That having, you know, an earlier release allowed for the kind of community building and, uh, welcoming feel. Um, people struggled to make that last for six hours or seven hours, right? Then you sort of delve into content and and so people didn't love the 98 degree heat and 98% humidity of the day. But they did really appreciate, uh, how it felt and we used to have an early releases the first day of school all the way back. And so this was a request that I got, uh, we received lots of feedback.
Why did you remind us of that 98 degree day?
Because it's 38 raining, um, I'll take my 98, um, but, uh, but, um, so that's the only kind of substantive change. Otherwise, everything is, there's slight date variations, but everything else, um, is pretty identical to the current school year, both on the pre and post Labor Day start.
Can you remind the committee why we don't align, uh, any of our breaks with the five colleges?
So, uh, the question comes up every couple of years, why don't we have a March break instead of a February and April break? Which is particularly in New England, this is pretty typical, but outside New England, most school districts have one break in the spring and it happens in March. And so. This is not a I agree or don't agree statement, but the Ms. The chair and I spoke and there's actually a school committee policy that dictates that there is a February break and an April break. Uh, each spring, or each winter and spring. So when that conversation comes to me, um, my short answer is, the school committee has a policy, we can't do that. I have a longer answer if anyone's interested, I'm not sure at 9:38 it's.
I think I think it's worth mentioning the slightly longer answer now also, which is. Um. Majority, vast majority, vast majority of staff?
Yeah, I'll just say it, yeah.
Majority or vast majority, just tell me.
I would just say majority.
Majority, majority of staff doesn't live in our district. And so if they have kids, their kids aren't going to this school district, which means even though there's hue and cry. But it's perfectly reasonable, by the way, perfectly reasonable. Hue and cry from people who work at EMAS or Hammer's College or something where they'd say. Um, I really wish you could align the breaks with, um, our breaks so that if I want to take my kids, I don't have to take them out of school. And we can have a really great spring break, which totally makes sense, perfectly reasonable. It turns out there's a countervailing voice from a lot of the staff who actually work in the district. Whose lives would be disrupted if their kids' breaks totally didn't line up with when their break was and vice versa. So they'd have daycare needs and or, you know, custodial needs sometime when they can't take off. And then they would have an opportunity to go away at a time in which their kids can't and they'd have to pull them out of school. And so it's one of those things that I think for a lot of us as school committee members, we get a lot of feedback from our constituents, which is totally understandable and reasonable. About isn't it obvious you'd do it this way? And it turns out, once you dig a little deeper, there are actually arguments to not do it, but also feel reasonable in their own way. Which makes a comp, or irrespective of super, of school committee policy. After 44 years living in town, I finally got a good explanation for that, thank you.
I don't know if it's the only explanation.
I have a question and I apologize for adding to this late, the late, um, meeting time. But, um, that explanation about the breaks is answered, um, sort of related to Mr. Manino's longstanding question that I've always had. But, uh, the one question I I do have, um, is the, um, is is our end date. So when we are ending in that last week of June, um, I I personally just really, really questioned the amount of learning that's actually happening in those last five to 10 days of school. When we've added five, um, five plus, uh, snow days. And I went, I, you know, and it it sounds like it's policy driven and so it's not something that we can impact for 19, 20. But I just would love to ask the question and maybe it's not for tonight, maybe it's for another time to understand. What, you know, how did we like end up in this situation if that plays, if that's just perception from my, you know, as a parent in the in the school district. You know, hearing my kids talk about, but basically the last week and a half of school, they're watching movies. Um, and not really doing a lot of learning in school. Is there ways that we can think through the calendar in ways to pepper those those extra snow days? In other parts of the calendar year so that they're actually impact impactful learning days as opposed to movies and popcorn?
So, I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure. When you say pepper, I think I'm just trying to get a better sense of what, what that means.
Um, right, so, um, you know, whether it's eliminating, um, one day of of a vacation day. So, you know, taking away one day in February or one day in April, it sounds like policy driven, we have to have a vacation. Is it mandated in the policy that it's five days? Um, it it, you know, and if it is, then obviously the answer is no, we can't do anything about it.
Absolutely.
Without changing policy. Um, but it just, it just seems to me when we, when we have the snow days and we tack them on at the end of the school year in June. Doesn't it sound like there's opportunity to move up the start of the school year, you know, a few days to to counter it so that it's. You know, some of those snow days are taken up at the front of the school year and some are at the end of the school year if needed. Um, I I just consistently, you know, see nothing happening in those extra five days that get that get added on at the end of the school calendar year.
So a couple of responses, yeah, so one is I'm concerned to hear about popcorn and movies because that's not my experience. So I think we could certainly bring that up either at school committee level or we could certainly connect as you feel better, uh, individually about that. Because that is not, um. I'm not saying that's not your child's experience or other children's experience, it it hasn't been the experience in two schools I've worked at. Um, I think there is a lightening of load and so realization that the end of the school year happens. My perception of that, you know, I have some family who live in a southern state where the school year ends on Memorial Day-ish. They have the same thing that happens at the end of May, right? There's something about days 176 to 180 that no matter what day of the week or what day of the month or what month it is. That there's a natural, you know, crescendo down, whatever that is, deep, um, sorry, I'm not a music person. Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, to that happens, now, I don't think popcorn and movies is the answer and again, we could fall offline. I also think when we have one day weeks, our attendance is is pretty terrible. So one of the things you'll notice, I didn't point it out specifically, is if you look at the December break on either calendar. We're choosing not to have school on this Monday, December 23rd. And then have the break starting on the 24th and that's when our experience is that when we have short weeks, frankly, even this week, which was a two day week. We've seen a decline in attendance, right? And so, um, we certainly could add a day to those weeks. I just, I wonder about what our attendance from teacher, teacher attendance will be, staff attendance, I should say, what our student attendance will be. And how much learning will actually happen in those days, given that, uh, our experience has been when we have one day weeks. Um, they generally are, are, there's not a tremendous amount of learning that happens on that day. So that's my, sorry, long winded answer.
Yeah, and so that would hold true also for that June 22nd date if we need to go to that.
It would, right, absolutely, yeah, and hopefully we won't because we just, and I'm not a believer in snow. Um, Mr. Sullivan knows, I've been talking to his department, 4:45 last three school days. Um, but, um, but, you know, sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. And then we get into a blizzard bag conversation, which is another topic for another day if the group wanted to go in and I'm not a fan. and I'm not a fan, but at all. But, you know, that's the way some school districts deal with when you get over a certain number of snow days, so that you don't have these one-off kind of days. But I'm not a proponent of that.
Sullivan, slogan?
I just wanted to say, as a child of two educators, that the February vacation was very special to us, because we went, as a family, we'd go skiing. And that was something that I would never, ever want to give up.
Schimmel? So process-wise, this is for our review, and the APA votes it first, and then we voted?
So they vote. So in order for me to bring forward a pre-Labor Day schedule for your consideration and actual vote, the APA has to vote to support a pre-Labor Day start first. So contractually, they have that right. Now, again, many, many years in a row, they will. I have a strong hunch, based on my conversation with the leadership, that that trend will continue. And then we bring it forward for a vote in December. So they're not necessarily voting, and they're sort of voting on a schedule, but they're really voting that they support a pre-Labor Day start, because contractually, we need that before I can bring a formal recommendation to you.
Ms. Renanis?
So I just have a question about April. So looking at these weird blocks of time that show up sometimes, right? One of the things that I see community members responding to, sometimes negatively, is when you have these weird weeks, like the week of April 6, where you have April 8, which is an early release day, and then April 10 is, you know, a day off, right? You know, trying to find childcare, staggering work and all that stuff, and it's not an official holiday week, right? And then two weeks later, you actually have the spring break, is really challenging. So I'm wondering if there's any way to move up, you know, and maybe not, but if there... If you thought about maybe moving that half-day to April 1st, moving that back a week, you would have two consecutive half-days, weeks. But, you know, I guess it's sort of a weighing, and I'm not sure, you know, what kind of thought process went into this, like in this particular pattern.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. Actually, we have thought about that, and the state has not yet released their MCAS schedule, but they typically have... At the high school level, there are days where MCAS have to occur. Like, it's not like a window, it's like the test. And it typically is the week that spans March and April. So we're avoiding that week for an early release, because 10th graders are likely to have MCAS that day, and if kids... If students leave early, I mean, yes, they could stay, but that causes all sorts of unfair pressure on students. So that's the reason for that. I'm aware of that sort of awkward wrinkle, but that's where we are.
So I guess the question is, would it be possible to move that half-day to the following week, though, the week of the 13th, you know, and have it be the 15th or something? Again, just trying to think if there's a way to provide some relief to, you know, parents who are trying to find alternate, you know, and maybe it's not that much relief, you know, I don't know, but it seems like, looking at the calendar, that's the only time where you really have this really awkward, you know? Otherwise, it's a great calendar.
Yeah, no, that's good feedback. We can take that back.
Great. And it'll be... This will be on the next agenda.
Yeah. And thank you to the APA for making their vote process fit with the school committee process.
Absolutely. And I love the fact they're voting first. It answers the question of, is this going to cause holy hell when it's approved?
Yeah.
It's like, apparently not. Gifts. We have a sheet of paper with gifts on them. Anyone who's inclined to be vocal right now, they can read it as a motion. Ms. Demling?
I move to approve the following gifts from Philant Elementary PTO, PTO Inc., number 1495, for Professor Professional Development Breakfast, 11-6-18, and the amount of $100. And from Hard Net, to support donation of clothing to Family Center, total amount estimate $250, for a grand total of $100.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Roll call vote starting with... Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Demling, aye.
Ordona's, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Nakajima?
Castenson, aye.
Ms. McDonald, aye.
And so it is approved unanimously. Anyone want to make any comment on that, by the way? I realize I rushed the vote through. No! Apparently, they don't. Upcoming topics.
We have any... Yeah! So budget guidance presentations, calendar vote. Think we'll be able to bring something on capital, to see if that timing works, but we'd like to bring something on capital.
Math?
We have math. I was getting there. Math discussion, location of meetings, inter-local agreement tips, which I did find out what that was, and now I've forgotten, because I've been up at 4:30 in the morning the last couple of mornings, so it's not fresh in my mind. And MSN students, hopefully, will be able to come. I want to confirm with them. It's loosely confirmed, but I'd like them, if we could do the beginning of the meeting, so that they can go about and not be here late. I have to find out about new courses. We may have one new course for your consideration. And that's... Let me see if...
And you want to do the question I raised in the chair's report, you want to do with that superintendent update, or?
Could. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Okay.
It could be its own item. It's up to the committee.
We'll talk about it later. We'll take and talk about it offline.
I make one comment before...
Of course!
I just want to make a comment on the importance of wellness. My daughter had a... What was it called? A shelter-in-place practice. It was one or two days following the tragedy in Pittsburgh. And the Milton Police came into the freshman dorm, and they did the shelter-in-place thing. And the police were so excited, because every freshman knew exactly what to do. They didn't teach them anything, and they thanked the students for knowing how to do it. And my daughter, being very sensitive to that, she got mad. And she actually told them that, you know, this isn't... I'm not proud of this. This is something I've been practicing since kindergarten.